Hi, good morning. Today is February 6, 2023. We are here early today because this is our annual board retreat. We'll spend the next few hours talking about doing a little reminiscing and then planning for this year. We appreciate that you're here. If you're watching, thank you for watching. If you're watching from China, hello, welcome. And so we'll get started this morning. It's a tradition of this board. We're gonna have a prayer. We're gonna have a pledge. And so if our our chaplain, Chaplain Taylor will come forward, we'll get started. Commissioners, if you join me, we'll begin.
Morning Commissioners. Lord, we come to today in behalf of our county commissioners, dear Lord. Thanks for them coming bright and early this morning, Lord, and thanks for preparations been made by them and this day and give them the wisdom they need to make the right decision, Lord. For your blessing and strength and dear Lord, this day in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. Randy, did y'all do something with the mics? No, it's fine. I get a lot of complaints during the week that folks can't hear us online. So I didn't know if maybe you'd change something up. So yeah, that's fine. All right, we're welcome. We've got an agenda before us. Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Submit.
All right, all in favor, say aye. All right, well, let's get started. We like to welcome, I don't want to call you a fill-in because I'm sure you're great at what you do outside of filling in, but our regular organizer and fearless leader was not able to be with us today. So how about introducing yourself to the county and welcome? We're glad you're here.
Sure, thank you. I'm happy to accept the title of fill-in for Julie. It's an honor. She's an awesome person, so I'm happy to be stepping in for her today. I'm really excited to be here with you guys. My name is Emily Wilson. I'm with Fountain Works. So we've, like you guys know, been helping lead y'all's retreats for about six years now. So it's been a little bit. So I'm really excited to be with you today. I'll do a quick review of our agenda and then we can jump right in. So I have it hanging on the wall here and then I know you also have it in front of you. So the first thing we're gonna do is just review some of the great things that have happened in the county over the last year, talking to you guys and seeing what accomplishments you want to draw out that happened. Then we're gonna get some tax assessor updates, especially looking at the revow. We'll get some budget updates and then we'll hear from the sheriff. We'll talk a little bit about planning and building inspection updates and then take another look at long-term planning also. Specifically, we're then gonna look at the transit building. And then comes the fun part is our working lunch where each of you is gonna have the opportunity to talk about those topics that you're really passionate about this year and the things that you want to see happen in the county. From there, we're gonna get some, here's some great things that have been happening with the Economic Development Commission and then we're gonna hear what y'all's priorities are as we wrap up and then you prepare for your three o'clock meeting. So with all of that, we can jump right in. So I'm gonna grab this handheld and you're gonna have to bear with me as I try to juggle taking notes and holding the mic so we can help make sure everyone hears. Okay. Okay, so while we work on that, we'll go ahead and get started. So I've got this little note board here. I'm gonna take some notes on. So I'll turn it over to you guys. What great things have happened here in the last year that you really want to bring forward?
The successful it's not the conclusion of COVID, but the successful containment of COVID within our citizenry and we're very, very thankful for that. And thank you for our health department and all of our other folks that participated in making that happen.
All right, successful COVID containment. What else?
Well, it was an election year, so it remains to be seen if the results are successful, but we made it through an election year. A lot of both new newly elected positions, sheriff, judges, judges. A lot.
Thank you. What else?
I think from a state perspective, North Carolina continues to lead the nation as a place to do business. And that is a big reason for us being competitive and being able to attract people and companies here. If the state is run poorly, it's really difficult to convince serious companies and international companies to come here and do business. So kudos to our representation from the state level.
And the county level and our EDC with Rod Kreider at the top leading us. I mean, and with our chairman's help, it's been phenomenal economic development. I mean, you can't help but call it a boom.
What else?
Mike was just talking about the largest project in North Carolina this year, I think. Macy's.
Yeah, Macy's announcement.
It was Macy's?
Yeah, Macy's, Red Rock, North Point. I mean, there's true. It's funny, when we first started, we knew every company, we probably knew every principal of the company, we knew their secretary, we knew their kids' names and birth dates. We knew everything about them. Now, because there was usually only one, if we were working on something, now there's stuff happening that we're even surprised at that we hear as the EDC doesn't really or there's some cases where EDC isn't even consulted. They just come in and show up in a municipality and we get notified that way. So just kind of a time of, I refer to it as a time of blessing for Rowan County. Jobs and investment. Yeah, it's unparalleled in Rowan County. We've talked about for years, if you say Rowan County is the donut hole, the donut hole, everyone shakes their head, they understand. And now we we talk about we're no longer the donut hole, we're the filling. Because everything is now focused on Rowan County and that's, that's a good thing.
That's a great one. Any other accomplishments?
I think the Ag Center going forward is definitely an accomplishment. We had to put it on hold during COVID. Well, we didn't have to, but we did. We didn't know what our budget was gonna be last year. But it's nice to be able to start some of our internal projects that need to get done. The Ag Center was an absolute. The Public Health Department will hopefully be next because the space they're in is they need twice as much space. And with the Medicaid cutoff that's coming up the first of this April, we can put that in the challenges next. Our department is gonna be seeing a whole lot more people trying to get healthcare.
Don, did we get our matching funds this year for the park? Woodleaf Park.
Any other accomplishments over the last year?
Animal Center.
Well, we were able to start the new dog adoption center. It's within probably 60 days of completion. I understand the holdup is they didn't order the equipment. Open the facility if you don't have the equipment to operate it, but it's gonna be a big asset for us. Can't speak enough about how animal services done a tremendous job over the past decade. At one time, we were one of the worst animal control facilities in the state and currently we're now number three. So they've done a fantastic job over there and they need to be commended for all their hard work and dedication.
Craig, you know, this weekend I read just a glowing Facebook post about how we used to be so bad and now we are so good. And it just really makes your heart feel good.
In a clarification, Craig said we used to be the worst and now we're number three. That doesn't mean we're the third worst. It means we're third from the top.
Any other accomplishments? We've got a lot going on here. So we have successful COVID containment. It was an election year and had lots of new positions elected. Leading the nation as a whole state is a top business place, which has brought in so much for you guys in terms of your Economic Development Commission and then even businesses coming in outside of that. Got internal projects that have been going on like the Ag Center Center and then like we were just talking about that rapid change to being one of the best in the state. Any other accomplishments that you guys want to highlight from this last year before we move on?
Both the DSS and the Health Department have been recognized for their work this last year.
All right, any others?
Yeah, I think the county has taken some big steps in leadership from our county manager, assistant manager are working hard to improve themselves, but now our county manager and others are working on, it may be for the first time along with help from HR, development of our our entire leadership team, our director team in putting them through leadership academies, if that's what you want to call it. But that's that may be a first and that's something really important as we try to make sure our bureaucracies understand that we are not monopolies, that we are truly in competition for our community's economic well-being.
Any others?
In that same vein of thought, we just got through hearing a report from got the name of the firm that does our audits, but they were talking about the financial success or the stability that the county has had and what good financial shape that it's in. And that may be a challenge going forward with what's happening in the nation, but I think we through the leadership county manager and the finance folks that we have done a good job with it.
Any others? All right. So with that, we will move on to our tax assessor updates. So I will turn the podium over. I believe it's Chip, right? Awesome.
I bet he's carrying a gun right now.
Morning.
Good to be with you this morning.
Pull that up a little, Chip.
Yeah, Chip, you need to talk right into it.
It's good to be with you this morning. We have some hopefully good news for y'all and so that we can get started in this next, next year. I've got a PowerPoint presentation, some of what I'm gonna show you. You've seen and then I've added some different things and that should be helpful and interesting for us to get through this revaluation process for this year. As you know, we do a reappraisal every four years in Rowan County. It's mandated that it be done at least every eight years. The county chose to go to a four-year cycle several years ago. The last one was completed in 2019 and we're in the process of finishing the 2023 reappraisal right now. Just a basic information about what the tax base consists of. We have 80,632 parcels, 6,476 are commercial industrial use, 52,265 are residential lease. We have 748 leasehold, which are improvements that don't include land. We've got 4,464 parcels that participate in the present use value program typically for farming and 16,679 vacant properties. As far as personal property, we have 19,259 individual personal property accounts, 76, 97 business personal, 403 public service companies and 142,728 vehicles. That's what makes up the property tax system for Rowan County. We're required to appraise property at 100% of its current market value at each time we do a reappraisal. Last fall, we adopted a schedule value standards and new rules that we're using to complete that process. We complete the process using mass appraisal techniques. Whatever values we end up with for this 2023 year will remain the same until the next reappraisal, which will be four years from now in 2027, unless some improvements or demolitions occur on that property. We use three approaches to value. Market, which is analyzation of sales. Cost, which is replacement cost new. And income, which is considering the income that commercial properties generate such as apartment complexes, hotels. We use whatever approach is most applicable and determining the market value.
Somebody, a taxpayer, are most residential's done at cost new or are they done at market value?
A combination of both. The system's generated a replacement cost new, but we, we look at what properties are selling for. The market is always the most applicable when it comes to residential. You know, the cost to build may be considerably less than what the sale price is. So we try to reconcile which is the most applicable.
So usually they're using a market value.
That's right.
On residential.
Yes, sir. Since 2019, we've had 16,706 residential sales. We have just under 12,000 of them were qualified. There's been 1,137 commercial sales and 714 of those we've qualified. We can't consider unqualified sales like foreclosures, bankruptcies and condemnations. So they're not really considered as far as arriving at market value. This map shows you just where the, the volume of sales are occurring, where the if you see where the largest circles are, there's actually numbers underneath those circles, but they're not legible because of the size of the map. But you can see the volume of the sales pretty much coincide with the towns. You know, Salisbury, there's large volume of sales and you follow 85 down to China Grove and Landis and Kannapolis, that's where the
Chip, will you go back one slide and maybe Aaron can help me remember because he told me this revow is taking into consideration 16,706, the data from 16,706 residential sales. And I think Aaron had told me that in the prior revow, which would have been in 20, what's?
2015.
Twenty.
Well, 2019.
2019.
Yeah, prior to that.
Which was for the prior four years.
Yeah, the number was, like, I had that number at a previous, I believe it was 15,000 and some.
I thought it was a lot less than that. I thought it was like 12,000.
It could, I can't remember.
Anyway. I can go get it. No.
It's considerably less.
I mean, that's, that's part of the issue is there's so many more house sales.
That's right.
Than in the prior revow.
Yep.
Okay.
But that map just helps us to see where the, the largest volume of sales are occurring. This is just a list of the counties that are all doing revows this year and they're all in the same process with, that we're in right now, mailing notices now and getting ready to get everything worked out through the appeal process. It's a breakdown of the tax base. 78% of it is consists of real property. Personal property is 8%. Public utilities, there's 5% and motor vehicles is 9%.
And you're saying that's the percentage of the taxes?
The tax base itself, the the that's the 78% of the total tax base, which for last year was 13.1 billion. 78% of that was consisted of real property. All classes. This is an interesting number here. In 2019, the average home value was 182,000. In 2020, it climbed to 200,000. Then 232,000 in 2021. In 2022, even though it says 23, it's, the average home value was 281,000. So at the last revow, an average home brought 182,000. And this revow, it's, it's $100,000 more for the same property in the last four years. The as far as where we're at right now, getting ready, prepared to mail the notices, the current increase in the real property is 44.96%. Now, that doesn't mean that, that everything's gonna increase at that same percentage. There's that increase includes all the new construction that's going on. And it includes areas where there won't increase that much and includes areas that may increase more than that. But that's just strictly the change in the real estate value portion of, of the tax basis increased 44.96%.
I have a quick question. This is out of my ignorance. Okay, we are on a four-year cycle and we hit revow at the top of the market basically, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Now, if we have like a bubble burst like we did back in 2008 and things really drop, the bottom drops off, is there a process somewhere where people can come back in and get their?
Four years. Well, we
Revalued, don't?
The revow is being completed right now and it's considering all the transactions that have occurred since the previous revow. So the only the, the only process as far as the change of market value, we will look at that in the next reappraisal. So
And the only way you can object or adjust now is like within the next 15 days after we get our
Yeah, well, you'll give, I'll get into that in a little bit more detail when we get into mailing notices. I'll explain that.
Thank you.
But we've been watching the market very closely, you know, every day. That's one of the things that me and my staff are paying attention to. The, the things have slowed down very much. So as far as the volume of sales and the day, the time on the market is, is, the time on the market for a while was a week or less or less than a month. You know, you know, now things are going on the market and they're sitting there for, unless it's just a super good deal for somebody. So we're trying to take all that into consideration, but our deadline was for sales, the actual use of sales was December 31st.
And that, just to point out, that, that number does not include personal property and vehicles, which, you know, that's, you know, vehicles decrease, but in theory. In theory, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that, that number is not the total of all property.
That's right. That's just real property, just real property. Personal property in motor vehicles and public service companies, they're actually revalued every year. So they don't, the revaluation doesn't apply to those properties. So they'll change every year. Motor vehicles and some personal property have been increasing just by the sales prices that are occurring within the economy, but that is not, I think it's not as drastic as it was. We're, we're seeing it kind of slowing down a little bit, but for a while when they weren't producing new vehicles, the price of used vehicles was increasing pretty drastically. Just to cover the dates coming up, we're, the goals are to mail the notices by the end of this, of end of February. The appeal period, informal appeals will start as soon as the notices are received. We'll process those appeals and, and the next process will be when the Board of Equalization convenes the first part of April and then they'll adjourn sometime in June from taking new business. Just a few comments here on appeal reasons. Good reasons to appeal are assessed value is higher than the market value, assessed value is less than the market value. We do have people appeal occasionally to where we don't have the value. to where we don't have the value, you know, we have say three hundred thousand on their home and it sold for three sixty and they, they can appeal them. Assessed value is inequable with similar properties. Um, not good reasons to appeal are the percentage increase from the previous value or assessment, ability to pay the taxes, the historical construction cost. You know, if you build a house ten years ago, you know, it's a lot different to build a house now. So that cost would not really be applicable and then economic conditions. And that pertains to, uh, you know, if, if things do change in the market, then we would want to do another reappraisal at some point in time to correct that. Okay, just an overview of the process. Uh, all persons owning real property in the county are receiving notice of their new values. Property owners should review the information within the notification of the values sent. Property owners wishing to file an appeal for an office review may do so online, by mail, in person, or by phone. If a property owner does not agree with the office review or what I call informal appeal decision, they may file an appeal to the Board of Equusation and Review. And then if the property owner does not agree with the Board of Equusation and Review, they have the opportunity to file with the North Carolina Property Tax Commission. That's an overview of the appeal process. Uh, we do have an online appeal system. I've just put a couple of slides in here to show how to get to it. You go to the Tax Administration website, Tax Assessor. Uh, if you go to the, and then that takes you to this screen and then there's a appeal request. And then that takes you to this form that you can fill out online on our website. And that form is then forwarded to my office and we'll process that online. So, uh, the next thing that, um, that we're in the process of getting set up is a software that will be available for our use as well as the public and it's called, uh, Comper. Uh, they, they will see, even though we don't have this set up yet, I've tried to simulate what it will look like. Uh, they'll go to like our website or our mapping website, pull their parcel up. And then they'll do a property search and that will take them to a screen similar to this and it will. The, when they search, it will put their property will have this red, um, sign on it. That's the property that you put in the property search. And then this software will display the sales that have occurred in their area. So they'll actually be able to see that. The public will have that information available to them. I'm hoping at the same time that we mail the notices out. And then we'll, we'll put some information on the website, but possibly run something in the newspapers so that people know that this system's available. Uh, this will be very helpful because when the property owner looks at their property and sees what other properties are selling for in their neighborhood, they'll do one of two things. They'll either say that their property is valued higher than the properties that have sold and they'll have a reason to appeal. Or they'll say that those sales are right in line or maybe higher than what we have those valued at. And they'll decide, well, you know, ours is in line, there's no reason for us to appeal. But this is a very beneficial tool for our department. It's a good thing for the county to have. It's, it's really putting all the information out there that we use to come up with the values for properties, especially single-family residential. It'll work very well in these, um, you know, large neighborhoods with a lot of homes.
Great.
Chip, is this?
Pretty excited about this.
I'm sorry, um, is this the software that realtors use already or something similar to, is something similar?
Probably something similar.
Okay.
But I assure you, the realtors will love this also because this will help them come up with their comps very quickly. Um, you know, to be very beneficial to my department as, as a staff because we'll be able to see, um, you know, where, or, you know, do we need to do something or no, are we right where we need to be very quickly? So we're, we're excited about this. I hope to have it going, you know, within the next thirty days. Okay, just to recap the dates, uh, notices mailed the end of the month, the first week, the, the end of February and the first week of March are in the same week. Appeal party period begins immediately. Board of Equusation Review in April and then the adjourns for new business in June. Okay, now, just to, uh, cover the tax base that is projected as of January the twenty-seventh. And see the, um, the previous year, uh, real property had a value of ten point six billion dollars. It's proposed to go to fifteen point four. That's a, that's the forty-four point nine-six percent increase in the, in the, uh, real property that I'd mentioned in a previous slide. Uh, currently, the personal property, the public utility and the registered motor vehicles, those values are not in existence. You know, we have to use what we used last year because those, the listing period just ended, you know, all the properties that have to be listed. And we have to project what the values may be based on the previous year. So that's why they're very similar to what it was last year. Uh, so the actual total tax base is, is near nineteen point three billion. But by the time we consider, this is very early in a preliminary estimate because we have so much work to do between now and June. That's why adjustments have to be made for personal property listings that are ongoing until June thirtieth. We'll have appeals of property. You know, there'll be a significant amount of appeals because of the changes in the real estate values. We have applications coming in for exemptions, exclusions and deferments that will be processed through the month of June. And then each year we have to consider the tax collection rate, which is running around ninety-eight percent or ninety-seven point eight percent. So in considering all those, the proposed preliminary tax base is eighteen point five billion, which is twenty-eight point five-eight percent increase over last year's.
Chip, um, can you go back a couple of slides?
Sure.
Little bit more. Um, yeah, right here. I just, you know, would like to point out to the, um, to everyone here and to the board. I mean, Chip has done an excellent job. His staff has done an excellent job, but you, in total, you've, uh, valued about eighty, eighty thousand?
Eighty, just under eighty-one thousand.
Yeah, so, so there's gonna be mistakes and like Ronald Reagan said, trust but verify. Um, so wha- what I'd like to point out is that, that, you know, with eighty thousand parcels, um, and I think I calculated the, what we, what our cost per parcel evaluating is, is about fifteen or twenty dollars, which compared to a, you know, if you have it, if you have your house appraised is, is a whole lot less. You know, there's gonna be mistakes and, and issues. And, you know, they've worked really hard to come up with a, a process and what I'd like to ask the, the citizens and, and this, and, and all the staff and everyone here to do is to trust the process that they've came up with is that, you know, everything may not be perfect, but the process helps things become perfect. Through the appeals process and eventually it goes before a board of their peers. So, you know, there will be mistakes if you, if you get your valuation in the mail and it, you know, is extremely, you know, high or low and you don't agree with it. The tax offices came up with a great solution, um, which, you know, Comper, he had just showed us that allows you to, um, you know, verify whether or not the assessment is, is fair or not fair. And then, you know, I think in a lot of cases, um, the administrative review can be handled outside of even going to the Board of, uh, Equalization and Review. You know, especially if it's a glaring mistake, um, and that type of thing. But I just wanted to thank Chip for what he's done and, and and ask folks to, you know, not necessarily tr- trust Chip, but, or Aaron, or any of us, but trust the process that it's set up democratically, uh, in a way that where everyone's rights are protected. Um, and it, and just encourage everyone to look closely at their revow and utilize the software that uh, the county's providing to do that. Thank you, Chip.
Yes, sir. That's, um, we have everything in place. Okay.
Hey Chip, can, can I go back one slide?
Sure.
I want to ask you a question about that.
Right.
At the bottom you have, um, nine hundred and twelve new construction homes completed for, uh, the twenty twenty-three, uh, valuation. What, um, what's that timeframe? Was that, was that, that many homes completed during the twenty-two, 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 twenty-three year? Or is that since last, uh, revow?
Those are the homes that either were started and completed during twenty twenty-two or possibly started in twenty twenty-one and then completed in twenty twenty-two for twenty-three's taxation. I just wanted to throw that in. That's kind of what we're dealing with. You know, nine hundred and twelve homes at two hundred and eight million dollars. That's, that's a good piece of new construction. And then if you throw in all the industrial property and the commercial new construction there, the, I couldn't get the exact numbers, but it's over three hundred million dollars in new construction for twenty-three.
Back that many houses the next, this next year?
I have no way to tell. Uh, the real estate market was going really well and they were building things very quickly. Uh, one thing I've noticed, there's a few subdivisions where they're building all these spec homes and now they're kind of sitting there right now. So it could, but I don't know. That's just something that we'll monitor.
Oh, is the buil- um, building of apartment complexes that continuing on a fast roll?
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few apartments going in. It just seems like there, that's one thing that's running, the rent, rental rates are increasing so much because there's a demand and the supply isn't matching the demand.
Yeah, and do you have any estimate at all, Chip, of how many of are on, online right now as far as hopefully being completed this, this particular year?
Homes.
Or no apartment, apartment complex?
Apartments, I don't.
Thank you.
So that three hundred million, when we look at the percentage change, forty-four point nine-six, call it, uh, forty-five percent. Um, that, that includes added, it, it, that includes added, uh, construction.
Yes.
Which, which is really only about three percent of that forty-five percent.
Right. All right. And then the, the last slide I have is just a copy of the notice that the citizens will be receiving. Um, we asked that they respond, you know, relatively quickly so that we can have a hand on how many appeals that we're gonna have. And we, we will respond to them as soon as we receive a notice. We either call them on the phone or we'll send them an email, whichever, if they provide us the information to let it, let them know that we're, we've received it and we will be processed. So.
I, I took a picture of your slide, um, upcoming dates. Um, says February, March, twenty twenty-three notices mailed to property owners. We really don't know yet. Today's the sixth.
It's gonna be that last week.
Be the last week.
Which will be the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth of February, which is the March first, second and third.
Okay.
Unless something unforeseen happens. That's what, uh, my projection is.
And then how many days? I think that was a question that Commissioner Klußman had. How many days, um, do they have to file a formal appeal?
Well, we've asked on this forum that they respond to us within fifteen days.
Okay.
In some fashion. However, we will actually receive appeals of the real property until the adjournment of the Board of Equusation and Review, which will be either in late May or the first of June. That's a statutory requirement. Okay. So, because anybody can appeal their property every year during that time if, you know, up until the Board of Equusation adjourns, they meet every year from April till May. This is just a recap of what we've just talked about. Um, we're gonna do everything we can to get through the appeal process. And, um, I look forward to getting started with it. So, any questions?
It was the, um, because I know we do it every four years, which I think is good for the citizens because if we did this every eight, it'd be greater increase. But is it, and the state allow you to do eight or four, or do they allow you to do two? What's, or is there no statute on that?
It's, the, the statute only says at least every eight years. There are counties that have, can do it more frequently than that. Uh, it's, it's a, it's a very large project to undertake, so to do it in less than two years would be very difficult. Um, but, um, if the property values change, you'd want to turn right around and do another one, which would take about two years completely.
I, I, I think as a general statement, you would say that, um, the overall is forty-five percent, but it's different in every location. It's different in neighborhoods, different in areas of the county, different in different municipalities.
That's correct.
So.
It, it's strict, we look at the sales in each of those areas. Uh, it's best defined by neighborhoods. Uh, and we would look at those areas that are, and what they're selling for in each location. Because some areas are just more desirable for one reason or another. And in those areas, it may dictate a higher market value strictly from the sales price.
Any other questions for Chip?
All right.
Thank you, Chip.
All right, thank you.
I, I think the, I think a, a quick message from the board would be, uh, forty-five percent overall is a big change. Um, but remember that's the tax value and the, the important, the other important figure in that calculation of our property taxes is what is the tax rate? And we are certainly not here today to announce what our tax rate is gonna be in, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, because we are only now beginning, um, that process, which we'll have done by, uh, June and then put in place, uh, for July one. Um, but certainly we're gonna look to see, uh, as a Board of Commissioners, what we can do to cut the tax rate, take, um, uh, as a Board of Commissioners, what we can do to cut the tax rate, take, um, a lot of the bite out of that. Uh, the, the property valuations. Um, I know we're united in that. So.
I think these are always, I guess, two-edged sword because we've heard this during other evaluations, but you know, it's good if, if you're buying your house for investment, you, you kept it and you're going to flip it and buy a bigger house, better house. These are good numbers. But if you're in your house to stay till you retire or pass on, it's not as good to have those numbers go up. So, you know, I think, um, I know back when we did it last time, we had a lot of questions that came up and it's sort of, people would say, well, I don't, it didn't do me any good anymore because I, I'm where I want to be and I don't want to move and I'm just paying more taxes. And the only thing I, the only thing I could think of telling was that that's true, but this is, in past cycles, you were a benefit of it. And this is the next cycle. So it's, even though it's hard on folks when their taxes or when the values have to go up on it, I mean, it's just sort of a normal progression of things. And, um, I think.
We'll make their kids happy though.
Yeah. Make their kids happy. But I think this is a challenge we're going to see as we're, you know, we're growing in Salt After County now. So we're going to have these issues come up over the next decade or so. I mean, because people are trying to move here, want to move here. And, um, you know, this is going to be a challenge for us. So, you know, like you said, we're going to do the best we can to try to do the best for both sides. You know, the folks that want to live in their house and, and going to stay there and those that want that investment and be able to move to different, different places. So it's going to be a challenging, uh, next decade for our county, I think. But I guess we're in a better place than we were before where we were having, uh, devalues. I think, was it fifteen maybe? We kind of lost some value in the county, so.
You know, some positive things that come about, the, the biggest asset that most American families have is their, the value of their home. That's the way folks pass along generational wealth. So, uh, would you want your, you know, if you're, if you're single and no children living in a home, you, you may not care about that. But most of us with children want to pass along an asset that will benefit the next generation. Um, also, the, the thing that people use, uh, to s- to start businesses is the, using the equity in their home. So, uh, if, um, you know, if the, if the tax value of your home is going up, that, that uh, presents an opportunity for a lot of folks who are thinking about that. The other thing I was thinking about this morning, um, I think I'd read something, but you know, if you're one of those, when my wife and I moved here in ninety-five, um, you know, we, we set cash aside to live because we made next to nothing our first couple of years. Um, so we put down the minimum we could on a house and we paid that ugly thing called, um, uh, PMI, private mortgage insurance, which was a couple hundred dollars a month. And so if you're one that does that, this presents an opportunity possibly for some of our folks that if the value of your home has increased and now you hit that twenty percent, uh, appraisal mark, you, you twenty percent equity in the house, uh, you could potentially, well, you, you could petition to your bank uh, to drop the PMI. And so it really wouldn't have been done any, anything that you did by increasing uh, the equity in your home. It's, it's what the market's done and, and, uh, that could be a, a huge savings for you. So uh, for, for some, there'll be hardship, for some it's opportunity. And so like Mike said, we, we got to figure out what the balance is. They're also in a extremely rapidly increasing uh, inflationary, um, market that, you know, the county has to deal with as well. So uh, Aaron will talk to us about budget. Oh, he's up next. So why don't, yeah, so why don't I just, uh, shut up?
Yeah, thank you, Chip and Commissioners for your comments on that. I think, is it Aaron? Is it you or is it going to be Randy doing the presentation?
Can I make one, one more comment before we get away from this? I, I hope that everybody caught in Chip's first remarks that this is a requirement by the state of North Carolina and this, this reevaluation is not optional to Rowan County. Now, the years may be optional in the way we do some things. But it's a requirement of the state of North Carolina and it is not county commission. It is not, um, our, uh, management team here. This is, this is a requirement by the state of North Carolina and every county. Uh, if you look back, I believe Chip put in there every, uh, related county uh, that's having theirs done this year also. So just citizens, please just remember this is not something that we're doing to bring extra money into the county to do our pet projects or whatever some crazy ideas might be out there. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. So Aaron, is that you or is that Randy for the budget updates?
I'm, I'm going to do it. Thank you. So we've, we've already started the budget process. We started it last week. All the directions and the budget packets were sent out to the departments. We've asked by March third, did all the departmental requests be entered and, and how that's done now that we've, that's all done electronically. And then between March twentieth and mid-April, we'll be having individual meetings with each department, which is the way we, we do it each year. And we go through line item by line item. Every single line and, um, look and see, um, what the needs are and the request and, and what we can afford to do. Uh, we anticipate having the, the budget delivered to the board around May fifteenth. It's required to be delivered to the board by June first, but we, we hope to have it a little earlier than that. Uh, and then the public hearing will be on June fifth, if the board approves that. And then the, the budget is required to be adopted before July first. So here's our, our fund balance, uh, since two thousand thirteen. And as you can see, it's, it's healthy. It continues to go up. Likewise, the, the amount of, um.
Aaron, excuse me. Could you have, whatever operating a screen, blow this thing up? It's really hard for me to read.
Randy, can you?
Thank you, Randy.
But with our, with our fund balance, which is our, our savings account, um, quite a bit of it is reserved and can be spent. Um, a lot of, some of the increase is due to the, the ARPA funds uh, that we've received that have not been spent. Uh, also would point out that our budget has gone up quite a bit too. So this is something you want to see. As your budget goes up, you want to see your, your savings go up, uh, from year to year. Next slide. One of the things we hope to do, no, that's, yeah, the CIP slide during this budget process is to work on a, um, capital improvement plan. And one of the reasons for that is we believe and based on what, uh, a consultant that we have, uh, has shared with us, we believe that if we do a capital improvement plan, continue to maintain a healthy fund balance, uh, which is important that the fund balance remains healthy. And our location to the Charlotte metro area, uh, that we hopefully will be able to just, just to strive at a minimum, but hopefully obtain a triple A bond rating. So, you know, as you see the fu- fund balance go up, um, that's something that you want to, uh, keep at that level because if you can, uh, obtain a triple A bond rating, then you're borrowing, uh, the interest rate when you borrow it goes down, which ultimately saves money and helps the county. Next slide. So, um, this chart is almost, uh, neck breaking, uh, which is a little scary. You know, everything we've heard today is, is good news. Uh, property values are going up, fund balance is going up. We hope to become triple A rated. If you look at our sales tax over the last twelve years, um, it has went from fourteen million to thirty-eight point six million this year. And I will point out that in the sixteen seventeen area, we added an additional article. I believe it was Article forty-four. Yeah, that goes for the schools in the county, but, you know, it's, it's really, I mean, it is material to a degree and you can see it reflected in those years, but, um, that does not have a huge bearing on this, this increase. Um, especially, I mean, you could just look at the chart and, and see that it's starting to, to get to a point to where, you know, it's like a, a, a rocket going straight up, but it's not. So, you know, we continue to hear, um, and we, you know, we've told the board and the board's probably told us and the media's told everybody and, you know, everybody continues to hear that there's going to slow down coming. There's a, a possible recession coming and you hear the, the analysts say there's going to be a soft landing or hard landing as the, the Fed continues to raise rates. Uh, but thus far, we haven't seen anything but up. And you know, we keep looking for when is, i- is the downtrend and, and thus far, we haven't seen anything, uh, but up. Um, and that, that within itself is scary because this is the, you know, this amount of sales tax is one thing we can't control. Um, but it's largely how we are continuing to operate at the level we operate based on this type of revenue. So what I put together and prepared because there's, you know, every, every analyst has a different slant, uh, on how, where they think the economy's going, what's going to happen. We continue to, you know, say, well, it's going to stop, it's going to, you know, it's going to, you know, dip down, this can't continue. But I really don't know. And I don't know that any of the, the, the analysts really know what's going to happen. But, um, I think if you look at some of the, what may give us a insight into what some of the, the broadest and smartest folks in the world thinks is going to happen is if you look at the layoff numbers that are getting ready to happen. Uh, and, and they're pretty frightening. And this is just over the last month. And these layoffs have, so the jobs numbers you saw last week or the week before doesn't reflect these layoffs. These layoffs are some of the largest companies, um, in America. And I didn't include several that I found because I couldn't find the percentage like, um, three M is one that I couldn't. It's a huge company that, uh, I think a lot of their employees are based in Raleigh. Um, but if you just go through these, with the exception of IBM, most of them are over five percent. Some of the comments that have been shared with some of these layoffs, you know, Hasbro, um, when, you know, when they announced a fifteen percent reduction in job rate, uh, it was basically their holiday quarter results were, were well below, far below what, what the street had expected. And that, that is pure consumer consumption. Um, and that's what drives sales tax. Now, is, is, I'm not saying that's going to happen. I'm saying the folks at Hasbro, thank you, thank, thanks, they think it's going to happen. The president and CEO of PayPal, uh, said they're doing this, and I believe theirs is seven percent due to the challenging macroeconomic uh, environment. That's not, you know, anything micro that's, you know, specific to any certain sector. Um, they just think the whole, whole macro economic environment is, is demanding they do this. The CEO of Dow Chemical, uh, was quoted as saying that the economic conditions have, and this is recently have deteriorated driven by record inflation, rising rates and ongoing pandemic lockdowns in China and, and geopolitical tensions. They're estimated to lay off five percent of their employees. And then Goldman Sachs is an interesting one because that's the, uh, investment banking. Not, not all banks have started layoffs, although, uh, BNY Mellon has too, that, but it was quoted in CNBC that a lot of the investment banks are taking a wait and see approach. Uh, and they're waiting for is the February, March numbers. So the month we're in, in the next month, uh, to determine if, if the whole industry is going to start cutting workers. You know, Charlotte's a big banking hub. If, if a lot of the banks follow suit there, then, I mean, you start getting close to home, which gets close to our sales tax numbers. The next slide.
Aaron, just.
Next slide.
Go back one.
Sorry. Okay.
Okay. So how many of these companies, um, are close to us or in our county?
I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that other than one of the articles, um, about three M.
Okay.
Is, I think they have folks in Raleigh, but all, you know, uh, Amazon, and Google have a presence in North Carolina.
Yeah. So it's kind of like Raleigh, Charlotte kind of things?
Well, no, there's, there's warehouses all everywhere.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, I, I don't know which ones are in or, or out of North Carolina. Um,
Do we have any local predictions at all in the county as to local companies that are going to lay off?
I haven't seen anything locally yet.
Thanks.
Well, you know, if Amazon is going to lay people off and the, um, it's going to affect a company like Macy's in the long run. It may not be the same name in there, but talking about employers that have thousands of people.
Ju- just with this sample, and this is not all, you know, this is not all of the layoffs that have been announced. The average is six point six percent. Uh, next slide.
One more follow-up. That it's my understanding, listening to the finance reports that I do, it, that um, economists are just really confused because even though we've got these layoffs, our unemployment rate is three point four percent.
Yeah, I think the, the, the most recent unemployment rate was the lowest that we've seen in some time. However, these numbers are not in, in those numbers because these layoffs haven't happened yet.
Okay.
The, these are, these are announcements that were made in the last thirty days from companies. And, uh, ne- next slide, but the next, next slide. So this morning, uh, at one forty-five AM and then it was updated at, at six fifty-three AM, Dale Computer, uh, is going to cut six thousand six hundred and fifty jobs. So it's, it's, it's really a daily occurrence. I asked, and there, there there may be a chance right now that if we went to Bloomberg or Wall Street Journal, that another company has announced in the last, you know, five hours that they're also going to lay off. Again, I, I don't know what's, what's going to happen, but it looks like. Um, again, I I don't know what's what's gonna happen, but it looks like some of the the broadest and smartest and largest companies um see something, and they're taking precautions um, you know, to protect uh their shareholders um by reducing employee count. And like this article says, it's the lowest uh headcount since two thousand seventeen. Um, and then the the article goes on to say IBM, which I listed in the last one, but Cisco and HP, I didn't list them with their major employee cuts. Um. So the next slide. The 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 main point of this presentation and the um um is not to necessarily dampen the mood, but to to bring reality to the table that, yes, um, our values and property are going up. Yes, our sales tax is going up at a a neck breaking pace. Um, and that that may very well continue. Um, I I don't see how that how it can, but it may. Um, but right now, you know, we have a across the country in the world, inflation, um, high interest rates, consumer spending is being reduced. Uh, and we have a hawkish Federal Reserve who is intent on continuing to raise the rates uh to get inflation under control, which if you add all that together, it it is uncertainty uh that we really don't know, you know, how things are gonna end up. I can tell you, if our sales tax takes a huge plunge, and when that happens, it happens fast. Um, when when spending stops, and I've I've seen it before in oh seven, oh eight, oh nine. Um, and it it happens almost faster than you can readjust. Um, because you start spinning your fun balance down. Um, you know, you start uh doing reduction in force, you start, you know, you immediately start taking actions because it it drops a lot faster than it goes up. Um, with that said, if if Rowan County were to follow suit uh with what the big corporations are doing in America right now, uh, we would need to eliminate sixty two positions in the upcoming budget. Um, uh.
It's not an announcement.
No, it's 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 saying if we were to follow suit with what some of the largest companies in America are doing right now, we would need to eliminate sixty two positions. Um.
And how do we balance that out with the fact that they were that we're growing so fast?
You just, you know, that's, that's a, well, the the the, if that happens, the growth would would stop to some degree. You would see a lot of the houses wouldn't be selling. Um, y- you know, that that would fall too. But, you know, you you just have to get leaner uh, or otherwise you increase the tax rate, and that's just something you can't afford to do when the economy is going down and inflation's already up. I mean, we only have a couple of sources of revenue that are really, you know, uh, that that have a true effect on how we operate, and that is our property tax and our sales tax. And our s- sales tax is driven by consumer spending. Um, and if if that drops, if consumer spending drops really fast, then our sales tax will start plummeting. Um, it may not happen. I mean, you know, all these companies may be wrong, it, you know, uh, the economists may be wrong, we may have a soft landing and things, you know, we're okay. Uh, the good news is uh, as of last year, we had, we had at least, I think, that many vacant positions. So it would, you know, we wouldn't have, you know, if this happened to me immediately, hopefully, we wouldn't have to eliminate any positions that had employees in it. But um.
Please.
When you have, when when consumer spending stops and you start going into recession, positions start filling up real quick because everybody's looking for a job and and the whole environment changes. So we may not have uh that comfort then that we have now.
Yeah, I guess I was just looking at it, is there such a thing as kind of being insulated? Because there are a lot of people that want to come here, there's a lot of businesses that want to come here. Um, so, like I said, one of those ignorant questions of mine.
Well, yeah, I mean, we could be insulated from our our property values because we won't have a revow for another four years. But sales tax is statewide. Um, and it's it's more of a, you know, it's also nationwide, uh, but but it's not really. But, you know, normally if our states are down, all the states are gonna be down. So when the consumer spending stops, that really affects our bottom line. Uh, and that's, you know, we only really have two ways to to raise, well, three, if you cut fees. But, you know, fees, tax, you know, property taxes, and then sales tax. Um, so, you know, kind of the reason for this presentation is just for for the board to be aware that, you know, it is a um, it's an exuberant time, and I think Greenspan said, you know, coined the word irrational exuberance when when the market years ago was going up so much. But is it, it's an exuberant time in our uh county um with values going up, with our sales tax going up. Um, and it may continue to be that way. I mean, we may look back ten years, and we're way, way up, and and this just was just the beginning. Um, but there's also, I think, a fifty percent possibility that uh it may not be. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that as we go into the budget. We're certainly gonna keep this um, you know, in our daily thoughts uh as we uh make recommendations and and look at what to do with the upcoming year.
Thank you.
I think the upward swing in our financial fortunes, um that you've had that um chart up here, I mean, it's a result of us being um terrified. Uh, we could say conservative. Um, but tha- that breaks down to being terrified through COVID. We didn't know what was gonna happen. If all of us uh had to had to bet what would happen, um, we would have done the same thing again. We would have put off projects, we would have um waited to take on more debt. Um, it it would have been a wait and see. The the frustrating part is the county is doing the right things. The state is, for the most part, doing the right things, putting us in a good position. Uh, the federal government, not so much. And so things we do here are not going to, they could, I guess I could come up with some nar- some scenarios where we could ruin things, so we're ruining our um our our local sales tax. I suppose the state could do some really dumb things that tank our sales tax. But it's not us, and it's not the state. It is the federal government that we are looking to that will really affect what happens. Um, with uncertainty across the globe with, we just saw it this weekend with China again, and man, who knows where we are in a few years? We can only do what we can do, keep our head down and make good decisions. And um, hope that those terrified decisions or conservative decisions um bear out in a few years to be wise ones. So.
All right, thank you, Aaron, for those budget updates. And then next, we're gonna hear from Sheriff Allen. And while you do that.
Welcome, Sheriff. Timer, so I do not go over, because I know how retreats work. About the funnest things to sit in all day sometimes. Well, first of all, thank you for um allowing me to give you ten or fifteen minutes. We appreciate that. Um, I want to kind of give a brief glimpse of what I've seen in the in the first, my first seven weeks at the Sheriff's Department, kind of where we are now, where we've been, where we're going, and how do we get there? And you 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 spoke about the trajectories going up. I think that the only thing that we can see in the future at the Sheriff's Department is our needs drastically increasing. As you noticed, that we we have been contracted through Spencer, Salisbury, now East Spencer. More and more, we're getting relied on by smaller agencies and smaller municipalities to cover Rowan County. Uh, Coolamie, the city, one small instance, the city of Coolamie dissolved, and the town and community dissolved. And now we have the River Park, which we were responsible for because Davie County will not come over and work it. They average twelve thousand visitors a week uh to that park, which will be another extremely high increase in our call volume. So one thing I want to do is just kind of show you where you are. I always grew up in Rowan County thinking Rowan County is just a little small country county. That's no longer the situation. We are the twentieth largest county in North Carolina, not telling you things that you guys don't know. We currently have a hundred and fifteen sworn positions, uh seventy detention positions, ten civil full-time positions, and thirty part-time, that fluctuates, counting between jail and all of our resources. Our part-time is very misleading because very few of those gentlemen, those people work anymore. We only have maybe four or five part-time people that we can generally, that we generally can count on. Uniform, the FBI crime report says that county agencies are staffed at a level of usually one point six sworn employees per a hundred thousand. You can see right now that we're only staffed at point seventy six per one thousand people. The city of Salisbury has eighty two sworn spots, that's two point two seven per one thousand. City of Concord, a hundred and eighty six sworn, one point seven one per one thousand. Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department, two hundred and twenty five sworn, point nine seven per thousand. Kannapolis, eighty six sworn at one point five six. A fun fact, you can go to the Defund the Police website, enter you into your population, and they will tell you what your police force is supposed to have. According to them, we're thirty positions short, and that's the Defund the Police movement. Uh, we have some. That's for a little later. Um, one thing I wanted to also um point out that as going over the last ten budgets, I have noticed that everything that the sheriff has asked for, you as a county have been very gracious. You have, I I could not see in any budget where the sheriff legitimately had a manpower need that you didn't feel. I've found in several instances, mid-year, mid-year budget, you increased positions in Sheriff's Department. Recently, about two years ago, you, or a year and a half ago, you increased the warrant squad to four officers. And those were new positions, so we do thank you for that. But I want to kind of give you a brief glimpse at what we've experienced in the last few years. Case reports since two thousand and ten are up a hundred and thirty four percent. Calls dispatched in two thousand and fourteen are up eighteen point nine percent. Overdose calls since two thousand and nineteen are up two hundred and fourteen percent. And deaths, according to overdose, mimic those very, very closely. One thing that we've, I think we've neglected at the Sheriff's Departments are our court operations and our civil operations. Court operations are up forty six percent since two thousand and ten. In other words, that's the amount of people coming in and out of the courthouse. As you know, we man those front, those uh, we only man one entrance now because we don't have the part-time people to work to cover the front entrance. We do that with two part-time guys, both of them are extremely on the edge of their retirement years again. And I fear that by this year's time, we will not have the part-time people to operate the security. Um, civil collections, in other words, our civil department that serves civil papers, civil garnishments, uh forfeitures, all of that stuff, evictions, up a hundred and twenty four percent since two thousand and thirteen. Today's challenges are extra duties at all-time highs. In other words, we get requests weekly for extra duty officers. Most of those go on field unless they pay forty or fifty dollars an hour, then they'll maybe get filled. We need three school resource officers right now. The town of Faith, the community of Faith is funded fully, a faith officer. The city of Salisbury has sat down and spoke with Chief Intern Chief Stallings, and they are willing to request us to take over Salisbury High School and Knox Middle School because they do not have the staffing and manpower to do so. Of course, those positions would be funded at a lot of that by the school system, which we've spoke to. Uh, contract coverage for small municipality, what the future holds, this is what I, as a sheriff, look at and I'm worried about. You can look at Cabarrus County, and they already contract with Harrisburg, Midland, Mount Pleasant. In other words, they've absorbed those entire police departments. As this economy gets stronger, or i- if it gets worse, we are gonna be in a situation where these smaller municipalities cannot hire officers at their pay rate. If we were to get another bump, if the city of Salisbury gets another bump in the near future, these agencies will not be able to keep up. I hope they do, I love them, we work closely with them, but the writings preferably is on the wall to some of these smaller agencies. And we are already seeing that at the Sheriff's Department. Like I said, we've already had a subcontract with Salisbury, which is a larger agency. We've subcontracted with Spencer recently, and now East Spencer, where we're averaging six or seven calls a day already there. And that's not investigating any crimes, that's simply just answering calls. We are at a manpower future escalation at the Sheriff's Department. I think the the growth that you guys have nurtured, as you're seeing in your charts, has trickled to us now. And I think that, you know, the, they didn't build the art until they, they built it before it started raining. That's exactly what I'm I'm trying to look at here today, is my first seven weeks as a sheriff and saying, what does our future hold there? Um, Spencer and East Spencer have asked for help, uh Spencer's kind of slowed down a little bit. But then again, we always have problems, all those are fueled by overtime positions. And our guys are already asked to be do overtime in the jail, we're already asked a lot of overtime extra duty assignments. I fear that they're, that when the municipality asks for help with our current staffing levels, we will, we will not be able to help them. And I do see that as a wave of the future, that we will be, I believe that local boards will be approaching you in the next four or five years, saying, will you take over our police operations? Whether they give you budget, statutorily, we have to take it whether they give us budget or not. I'm required to answer those nine one one calls by law. But I think we need to plan for a future of growth at the Sheriff's Department. Um, courthouse security is a is a major issue. I I I do feel that eventually we are gonna have to staff those with full time. One major concern and is a high priority for me is our ICAT, that's Internet Crimes Against Children, that's what that stands for. And child abuse are at all-time highs. We currently have seventy ICAT cases. The state of North Carolina SBI gives us a report monthly of, and they turn over these cases to us, and they're, they ask us to investigate those cases, and we have currently seventy of those that are going uninvestigated right now because we do not have anybody in those positions. We don't even have a position for that, we are spreading those out with our other detectives. Patrol operations are at all-time highs and manpower requests, and then, and then you know the narcotics and gang investigative positions. We need a future growth plan, that's what I'm I'm coming to you for, because I think it's larger, it's something bigger than even I can foresee in the future. With your growth, with what you're already expecting, I already think that we're a little behind in staffing and manpower. Not because you haven't given it, you've given everything you've been asked of. I couldn't find, like I said, I couldn't find a single situation where you haven't given a need that Sheriff Alton, or even as far back as Sheriff Willhand, asked for, it was posi- because I do believe that over the next twenty five years, we will need a twenty five to, and I, and I know that's bad when you see you gotta lay off maybe sixty two people. But I I think we need to, the county needs to fund a study of the Sheriff's Department and Grove to honestly see where we need to be and where we need to be in five years, because I do think that if that chart continues to grow, which I hope it does, that we will be in that situation very quickly. And I want to make sure as a sheriff that we are staffed and manpowerd, so when Granite Quarry or Rockwell or Spencer or East Spencer ask for help, we have the resources that we can help them. I thank you again for the four officers you gave us, we created a warrant squad and a, combined our warrant squad and our crew team together just last month. We took nine guns off the street, four of them, three of them stolen, two of them came out of a local high school that we took away for that unit being aggressive. Uh, we made certain over two hundred and ten warrants, we cert- we we wrote over a hundred and ninety citations. And when I say not citations, I'm not meaning writing the guy's speeding ticket that's going to work. When somebody calls me that they have a drug house in their neighborhood, I send that team. And I say, listen, every car that comes out of that dope house, you stop it. If you write a ticket, you write a ticket, push them out of that neighborhood, get them out of that neighborhood. They wrote a hundred and ninety citations in high drug crime areas last month to targeted people that we want to get off our streets. So we are being very aggressive in our approach in law enforcement. Uh, I foresee eleven, in my budget, I want you to to be expecting eleven requests. Uh, um, and I know you may not be able to fill all those, but the Bible says we have not because we ask not. And the uh two child abuse and and child defense detectives, we've not hired a a child abuse detective in ten years. Patrol deputies, I'd like to add one per squad, we've not added, in two thousand and thirteen, you gave Sheriff Alton four additional patrol officers. We haven't had an increase on patrol level since two thousand and thirteen. A civil deputy, we've not added to our civil division in ten years or longer that I could find. Uh, bailiffs, we have not added to our bailiffs in ten years. And again, like you said, our court volume has increased, almost doubled uh for that. Um, SROs needed faith, Faith Charter School has received state funding for a school resource officer at a hundred percent. They're willing to pay a hundred percent of the salary, of course, you still have, uh, you know, equipment and things like that in there. Of course, you still have, uh, you know, equipment and things like that in there. Salisbury High School, Salisbury High and Knox, Chief Stallings has asked that we look at taking those over. Have not heard officially from their county or their city manager, city manager's office, but I'm just going by what I anticipated, uh, rev, um, anticipations are. So that would be 11 in the near future. Um, I just want to kind of give you an update because I do feel that the growth that you guys have done, you've done a tremendous job in turning this county around in growth. But what we have not done at the sheriff's department is match that. And I foresee our need, especially if your economy does go down, our needs go, our needs will magnify. We're the only, one of your only offices that when the economy is really bad, we get really busy, even worse. So I, 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 I would like to request that, that the county would foresee maybe doing a study to see where those manpower needs really are. So it's just not my word that I, I, as a, as a new sheriff, would like that input as well. To find out what our needs really are. Do we have enough staffing? Are they used in the right or wrong places? But I, I do see an immediate, I, I could see a growth of 25 to 30 people over the next four to five years, especially if we continue to have to cover smaller municipalities. And I fear that as we continue to get raises and Salisbury's continue to get raises, and if the economy does turn, these agencies will not be able to keep up these smaller municipalities. And we see that and they struggle with officers. I hope they are successful. I don't want a countywide police force. I, I don't, that's not what I'm asking for. I hope it never happens. But I think that it would be prudent for us to plan that if we have to start taking over some of these responsibilities, that we at least start looking at that so it doesn't sneak up on us. Gareon's here, this is the, so that's really my presentation for what I'd be requesting in my next budget. I have Gareon Hill here, he's our, one of our guys in the house. I also have the porter master here. And I was asked by several county commissioners, uh, as a new sheriff, what would be one thing that you would like to do? What would make the office yours? What would rebrand the office like you rebranded the county? And if you'll go back to the very first slide on the program, I guess I can do that, it's right here. This patch that he has on his sleeve is just our, currently our SRT patch, but that is a new patch design that we have created for the county that highlights the county emblem that you guys so much use on a lot of your media and things. And if he'd step forward, this is, would be our class A uniform and I'd like to change. Gives us a tighter look. I am cleaning up our uniform quite a bit. When I came, I've been here for a long time. I've worked in extra duty event, maybe five guys and five different uniforms. I think you have one of the best sheriff's departments. Funded it, you've made it that way. You have provided everything that Sheriff Alton's needed. On the phone, so this is, I would like to propose a uniform change. Take forward by some of our asset forfeitures and also maybe some additional help. Bolder color and it's also, it may, it does a little better than just our total blue uniforms. They, they should last a lot longer because the blues will fade if you don't wash your blue shirt the same amount. So they, they cost a little more than the blues we're using now. But I do think a little, you're a good element because they're not fading. I'll be presenting you guys with a, in the next couple of weeks. Also that, I do believe of the gambling houses that we closed down, I would do like a uniform change. I, I love city police. I was a solitary police officer four years ago, so. I like it when our guys show up and they know, they know when your deputies are on the staff. They know, they're already talking about the drug unit that we already calling the dragons, the green dragons. But drug dealers know that they already know that we're different and we reset all this. Officers, I, I think they should be just as proud and see what who they are. And I like to be the same, and I like to reset all this. So guys, thank you for your time. My 15 minutes is up, but I just want to give you a brief future of what we need to be thinking about the sheriff's department. Because I do believe we are expen, we're going to experience some growth that if we don't plan on, we're going to be, we're going to be in trouble. If you have any questions, I entertain those or let you go get lunch.
I have a question. Um, Sheriff, this is a very informative presentation on future uh needs. One of the things that I guess I question, and this is from chairing the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, is what is our department doing to be in the business of preventative? How are we helping those kids that are young and at risk now so they don't end up in their jails?
Well, to be honest with you, we, we right now are fighting crimes at, at levels, gangs, drug violence, street violence. That I, we don't, we're, that's not even our, I'm just to be honest with you, that's not even our burden. The streets of Salisbury, Rowan County are shootings every night, every week. And that's when we focused our attention. I wish that we have, what I have done and I have required every new, every new officer that we have hired and every officer that we currently have, are currently doing the crisis intervention training where we're getting that. And that's a one week of training with the health department, other avenues. And it's to combat mental health issues and how to deal with people with mental health. That is part of our field training program. Every one of our new officers has that training. Those that don't have that training, we are sending them through now. Uh, they, uh, the health department and the people that put on that class have graciously added numerous classes this year. So within a year and a half, all 115 sworn people, all 70 jailers will know, will have that mental health crisis interventions training. The juvenile aspects are held by our school resource officers. We've talked, we've taken on the greatest responsibility. We do still have the teen court that we're still actively participate in, but I wish that I could tell you that we are doing a lot of proactive things. Uh, but our manpower needs are barely answering the calls that come in. I just, I, I'll be totally honest with you, especially when we're covering other municipalities. So very little in that area, ma'am.
Yeah, I know we've had some initial conversations with um Director Harris at the Public Health Department. And I'm looking forward to ours regarding um what we can do as far as jail diversion.
Yes.
Um, I don't know if you and us have talked numbers or percentages at all, but I know in other counties, it's been quite successful in the past.
Right. I've also, talking about jail diversion programs, I also began a conversation with our disretiriety Brandy Cook and a conversation with our new superior cook, Judge Atkins, about getting some uh treatment for people and counseling upon exit of our jail. Um, can we, like a lot of our low-level offenders where they only are sentenced to a few weeks or months in jail, we house those. Now, I've asked them, I said, is there any, we have, we're going to try to seek grant funding for some of these programs to where we may be able to knock three or four days off of their sentence or a week off of their sentence if they take that class that last week. So in other words, it would give them incentive, say they only have an eight or nine week sentence. If the judge would allow us to a grant program, it could be mental health, it could be family counseling, it could be anything. It could simply be life skills classes that if those people that are incarcerated with those low-level offenses would get a credit for time served for four or five days if they are active parts, participants in that program. That is something new that I'm looking for. Um, but that is an exit program, not a, not really an entry program and it deals with adults. But that is a step that we're trying to take. So I do really look forward to working with social services because I think there's a lot of grants and avenues that we can seek. And in a few years, really try to build a, build something other than just putting people in jail and letting them out of jail.
Yeah, um, I think we need to put a little group together because right now DOJ is pouring out grant opportunities.
And one thing that's very interesting, you may not know of, you, you guys approved to have the tablets in the jail, in other words, the iPads that the inmates can get programs on. We have, I have arranged for that company to allow us as a county to put pro, to put applications on that that they can watch. So DSS can create online uh content, sort of like an online class that these inmates can take on their iPads. I've reached out to local pastors that their Sunday sermons can be on there. I've reached out to the local Islamic center that, that their, their Friday morning services can be placed on that iPad. So these inmates are receiving local, local pastors that they can look at. They can, they're, they can receive local training from, whether it be job skills, whether it be drug rehabilitation, on the iPads presented by local, by local individuals. And we're, we're in the process of setting that up now to increase opportunities for uh those in jail now. I, I sure like putting bad guys in jail, but I'd rather not have. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. It sure is. Thank you.
Go ahead. Sheriff, you're, um, I know one of your slides, uh, did, did you have on there, did you have 11 openings?
Is that what?
Sir? Did you have on your, one of your slides that you have 11 openings that?
No, that, that is my anticipated budget request is 11 additional positions. We, on our crim, our openings currently, we have 19 openings in the jail. But we have not la, we have not lost a single new hire since the, uh, since December, since I was elected. Those that we have hired, we've kept. Uh, we've kept several. We were 25 down, now we're right at 20. We've included, deleted that number by about five and we have not lost one that we've hired since I've been elected. Uh, knock on wood, it could be four or five leave tomorrow. But uh, we've tried to change the culture there uh with the employees and you have allowed that. You've allowed overtime to be worked, you, you've done a lot of steps to assist that. That's really not anything that, you know, we have done other than spend a lot of time there, letting those employees know that they're appreciated. Um, on the criminal end, I, I anticipate that we'll be fully staffed on the criminal end by March or April. We have a few positions that we have open, but we're pretty much leaving those open for those that we have in B L E T right now that'll transition into that. But we have been very good at recruiting through the help of human resources and finance. Kelly's greatly helped us attract some very qualified candidates from outside. She's been very, very, very helpful that we've been able to steal a 15-year drug narcotics veteran. We, we've been able to take an evidence, evidence technician with already three or four years of experience. Patrol officers from other counties that have numerous years of experience, we've been able to recruit very well. Uh, you just approved a recruiter position in your last agenda. That has already paid dividends. Uh, we're going to be very aggressive in that. I don't see any problem filling our criminal positions. You guys have made us very attractive. You've helped us with our salaries uh and with a different culture, with a, a younger culture, uh, not steeped in the old traditions of things. Looking at policing, looking at law enforcement and how we treat people and employees differently is really making a difference. So I, I anticipate us being at full staffed on the criminal end by spring. I don't, I don't anticipate an issue right now. If, if, if I were given those three resource officer positions, I already have three school resource officers with certifications elsewhere ready to come and fill those spots.
I would say, and I haven't researched pros and cons of it, but I know some of the larger counties, including Mecklenburg, have started using armed security at their jails or at their uh courthouses.
That, that's correct.
And so I don't know, like I said, I don't know, I'm sure there's plus and minuses for that, but
Yes, sir.
I know some of the bigger counties have started doing that.
Yeah, that, that is something that we definitely will, I, I feel that we will have to make that transition to either full-time or that private security for courthouse security just for the doors. Because we used to man those with retirees and they are, and that retiree group is no longer really, is very active. Uh, the ones that we have, I would, I hope I can get another year out of them. And, but I, I foresee that being an issue. So that is something that we'll, that we are going to be studying and looking for, but Mr. Casky, you're absolutely correct.
One more.
You say, go ahead.
Armed, private security.
Yes, yeah, some of the uh courthouses doing the uh checks, the bags and stuff when they come in, that sort of thing.
Mr. Casky's correct. They'll usually have two un, and two private security, but there will be at least one deputy there to kind of monitor if things go, go south. But as far as making sure people's pockets are empty, run it. If you've been to a ballgame, you've seen show pros work, works off the same concept with one officer present generally to kind of watch uh what they're going through. But you guys have done a great job in creating, building this county. And I believe that as Rowan County is on the precipice, if the budget, if the economy will stay strong of exploding, which you are in your manufacturing, we are at the equal doorstep, if not already there. And we want to be able to make sure we provide a, a cost-effective fund. I'm not, I don't want to ask for things I don't need, but I would hate to have a need not ask for it. And that, that's where I stand.
Sheriff, um, one of the things that our whole county obviously is suffering from is not enough people to work. And the school is working really hard to do a job shadowing and those types of things. Do you have like a junior officer program or some type of interface with our school system?
Yes, we participated in the groundhog uh day, the shadowing day. We had four come through and um we had a great time with that. They, they'll be on our social media this week, the pictures that we had to get approval from the school system. And we are going to try to restart our explore program. Uh, our explore program was funded by Mr. Standback years ago, paid for a lot of the things. We are going to try to look for a funder to bring that back, that exploratory program back that gets young individuals uh more interested in, but not necessarily in the field. I, I would like to give young people an exposure to law enforcement uh in a, in a different, in a different light than it's been done. I, I think that we have to change in law enforcement and, and not in our enforcement, but in how we treat each other, how we, how we communicate with the public, how we, our persona to the public is. I, I'm, I'm very aggressive and old school when it comes to putting bad guys in jail. But I'm smart enough to realize that we have to change a lot of things in law enforcement, like you do in business. You, you don't operate in business the same way that you did 30 years ago. And we, as a sheriff's department, are really making great steps. Sheriff Alton took us out of the law, those old-fashioned ways himself, a lot of, did a good job. And I've inherited an office that, that is very eager for change. We're very young, uh, Gareon's already left, but our average, that, that is our average officer right now. A young 23, 24-year-old guy, that's, that's who we have. So we have to, we have to have an office that's suited to that new, that new employee and to market that to the outside. But yes, we, we are wanting to start back with that program is, is, when we get fully funded, I, I anticipate that we, that'll be, will be one of our jobs of our recruiter. And she also is going to do social media. We're going to have a very strong social media network. We've really taken a lot of things of what you guys have already done. How you jumped out on social media, rebranded yourself as a county. We're taking that same approach, but we're doing it as a sheriff's department. Thus, the uniform change, the logo change to kind of match the county emblem that you have a lot of your things. It doesn't say original, but it looks very similar in color and design to that emblem. Because we feel you guys have been very successful branding yourself. And I want to rebrand our office because I think future growth in that area is going to be tremendous. And I want to do it the right way and look the right way and act the right way.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Sheriff. Sheriff, I got a quick question.
I'm sorry.
I'm a bit confused and I stay that way, but you said that you have sheriff's department covering the river park?
Uh, right now, we, we, they have, we, the town of Coolamie has dissolved their police force.
I understand.
That park is owned by the city of Coolamie, it's entirely in Rowan County.
Correct. It is not entirely in Rowan County.
Well, this side of the river, this side of the
52% of that park is Rowan County, but it's owned by a municipality in Davie, Davie, Davie County. So why are we patrolling Davie County's property? We don't have the authority to arrest anybody.
Oh, we have, we're the only ones that it with, on this side of the river where their gazebos are, their parking lots are, their park is, we, that is all our responsibility, every bit of it. Half to the river, the other side, the, the, the river park is 50, is a very large tract of land.
I'm familiar with that.
And but half of that tract of land is unoccupied, uninhabited, wooded and, and on the Davie County side. Sheriff Hartman, the Davie County sheriff, met with me, we met with Coolamie, he refused to cross the river. Uh, said that he will, he's not going to have enforcement actions in Rowan County. Uh, he contracted with the town of Coolamie to provide their services, but exclusively in his contract, left off the Rowan County portions of that park. And to me, that, that, I don't like it no more than anybody else does, Mr. Pierce. I, I, I don't like it. I think it's Coolamie's responsibility to pay for it. If that, if we end up having to do it and they've wanted us to work extra duty and be paid for that. But I expressed to them my concern that I don't, I can't force people to work extra duty when I'm already extra duty everywhere else and overtime everywhere else. Um, I do anticipate that being a call volume issue. Um, but it's no different to me than a, than a business park that's owned by a private company. Now, I don't have to patrol it. I don't have to be there every day, but if a crime happens there, I have to respond to it sim, as I would any, any other piece of privately owned property. Because it's owned by, not the town of Coolamie, it's owned by a river park association. It's not technically
It's owned by the nonprofit now, but the reason I'm asking is uh while I was on that board, we initiated charging admission
Right.
to the river park, which had never been done.
Right.
So if they have resources to charge admission, should they not have the resources to have private patrolmen come out?
They, they do charge admission this year. Last year they started charging admission. Uh, it was, I think, $8 a car. Um, they had, then that is why they're saying they have plenty of funds to pay us for a part-time officer to fill that position. I told them I would offer that as part-time, but I could not guarantee that it would be covered because I can't force people to work overtime. Uh, I, I, I don't like it, you see, more than, than, than you would. Zone seven is a very rural part of western Rowan County, which we don't have a lot of call volume in, other than some drug areas up on Needmore, Cool Springs and that area. But it doesn't gener, it's mostly farmland, so it doesn't generate, generate a lot of response for us. I fear that park will, in other words, if we're one short, we usually pull that car to go work somewhere else in the busier part of the county because that woodland section is just a very slow call volume section. Uh, but I do fear that it's going to increase our call volume there. I think that it's going to be the first summer to really see where that lies. I told the town of um, the, the river, the park community, I said, we will try it on a part-time basis. But I said, I may come to you and ask you to fully fund a position. If I'm going to spend resources there.
My, my point is if we're going to have to have the responsibility to take care of another county's municipality, then somebody needs to compensate the sheriff's department for that.
I agree, I agree 100%. That's why we, we're going to start this year on a overtime basis. They're going to pay time and a half and only have somebody there like on Friday and Saturday, on their, Saturday and Sunday, on their busy times. Um, so I hope that works. If it doesn't work, then I will be, I don't like, I agree with you. I don't, I don't want to be doing it for free.
Okay.
And we're going to take this And we're going to take this first summer to really see what this call volume is. And then we're going to reach out to that river park and, and make some other negotiations.
The reason I ask is one of the big issues they have is people come down there, not supposed to have any alcohol on premises. But you go down there on Monday to clean up and there's.
Yes.
Two trash cans full of beer cans and bottles. So my concern is do we have the authority to arrest these people if they're violating the park rules?
Uh, we, we would not be, that, those are not even state infractions. Those are just park rules. Now, once a park employee asks them to leave and they don't leave, then we would be able to charge them a second degree trespass. But as far as drinking or anything like that, we would not have any, there's, you know, that's a park rule. That's not a, something that I can enforce, a park rule. Uh, simply like as, as Dan Nicholas Park does here, they, they enforce their own rules. Uh, they have those same type rules. And if they don't, we ask them to leave and if they don't leave, we can arrest them for trespassing then. But I, I hope it's not a hot, high call volume area. I fear that it will be. Uh, I've been raised in the Woodleaf community and I, I know what the, what the stipulate, the stigma that the borough has had over the years. So I do believe, Mr. Pierce, that it's something we have to watch closely. I agree with you, sir.
Thank you, Travis.
You got it.
We got to roll. Thank you, buddy.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we're going to do a quick ten minute break. So we'll come back here. We don't need a break? We're going to have a working launch starting at twelve thirty, so.
Um, can we go ahead to Ed and, uh, if you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Ed, you want to?
Okay, great. So we'll move on to Ed looking at, uh, planning and building inspection updates.
Oh, I'm sorry, my bad.
Chairman, are you good to go or are you going to?
Looks like everyone's good to go, go, go somewhere else. Uh, why don't we, why don't we take five, okay?
Thank you and good afternoon. It's now twelve oh three. I'll give you an update on all the things going on related to our departments with planning, development, building inspections, environmental health and fire division. As it relates to the technology project we've been working on. And of course, feel free to ask any questions and I'll have some time at the end as well. But technology task highlights that we have, and I look back over what I had presented September twenty twenty-one, when we were just kicking off some of the major projects here. And I had talked about the online portal, we had it in testing. And I'll show a few things here with this, but the online portal that we have, that's for all things permitting inspections. It has been live for quite a while now and we're continuing to move different items on there. So we have two different environments. We have the production, which is what everybody sees, the departments work with, citizens and contractors work with. And then we also have the testing environment. And right now, environmental health and the zoning, both preliminary and zoning permits are in the testing phase. But we do have all of the building inspections. And so there's seventy-nine different building inspections that have been live on the site that's for online use. The other thing we worked out during this process is the credit card submissions. Right now they have it before both one time and recurring payments. That was an interim solution that we're using for that, that building inspections is using for that. And we've, you, you guys have since had the contract for Tyler payments. That's in progress. We've got a lot of backend pieces to go through to get everything aligned between tax department, finance and our building inspections, planning for that process. And right now we're going through electronic plan review, which is where any of the plan review process that comes in, that would be paper submitted, will be electronic. And I'll leave that and say plans will ultimately be in a digital format. And as I talk through this, I'll mention that, you know, Rowan County is in a mix of both high customer service, high in, in person, on demand, talking with people. Versus everything is amazon.com, you never see anybody. So quite an interesting dynamic that we have, but all the departments are still in a very high customer service focus. So we anticipate we're going to have paper plans delivered, but the goal is to have those scans, they're available for everybody. So no immediate, you have to just only submit digital, especially when we start getting into different types like erosion control and others. So citizen self-service portal, this is off of the main page. Um, and this is where we're telling all the departments to go. This has since been fully built out. Uh, this is tied into the application that we're using, which is the Tyler intergov solution. And so it's just Rowan County N C dot gov slash C S S for citizen self-service. You could say contractor self-service as well. Pretty much everything you'd want to know about permitting that's there, you can search public records, view that, you can see schedules. I know it was brought up, um, you know, in, in the past, we're talking about how do we have more departments for scheduling inspections? So as we work with environmental health, we can look at having like today's inspections, they'll have that list, but they're not, not there yet. Uh, we've got the how-to guides with screenshots of how you go through, we have the pay for permit. What we have found in working with all the departments is that through this process, while you're going through a permit or applying to pay for a fee, is that everything will have a staff review before payment. And that's, that's pretty much across the board that you're not going to be able to prepay for anything. It will have a staff approval, so we're not getting into refunds or something's been submitted incorrectly and now we're having to worry about paying the wrong fee. We also have the G I S, which I demoed that before and show you some data that came from that and looking at padding on the others. So here is the most interesting find, and this is from, really from a recent upgrade that kind of exposed a new set of data. That's always been there, but it just put it nice in a report. So I wanted to show that in twenty twenty-one, this is the number of building permit applications. And as I said, all the permit applications are now online. Um, so you have a choice if you're going to do anything for new construction, whether it's commercial or residential, to go in the office and work through a staff or submit online. Um, so prior to the application being fully deployed and ready to go for permitting, you know, you could see the slight increase here. Where we had some testing going on and just kind of getting it known. But in January of twenty twenty-two, we can clearly see in February and March, very interestingly, we went from the in-person permits being requested to online, you know, exceeding that month over month. We did have an oddity in December, cold weather, not sure, but just data is, is showing that there was more in-person applications or it could have been a bundle of applications. So really wanted to highlight that to show that making things available online for our citizens and contractors does have an impact on staff, whether it's, you know, making it accessible and easier for them. I have talked with Chief Building Inspector Thomas O'Kelly on this. One thing that internally we're looking at is how staff handle this. Again, I said, we have a customer service focus. So if you, you come in, that you're going to be processed, you're going to be, you're going to be walked through with your permit application. That'll be the same for other departments as well. So what that can do when all of a sudden, and we've looked at the numbers of increase in number of homes permits and things like that is a backlog in the online permits. Um, so wanted to mention that to you and say that that's a known issue, is trying to work through that backlog. Um, and I've talked with some of the building developers on that because they're looking at what's the best way. Right now, if you have an immediate, you're trying to get something through physically, going into the office and, you know, not having to have an appointment, but working through that is definitely the fastest way to work through that. Because you're communicating live with somebody, you're able to work through anything that's needed. If there's, you know, you need to have a plumber, um, you know, permit number or a license number on something, you can work through all of that. You know exactly what to do. If you're doing it online, you're submitting, you're kind of going in a back and forth process. But did want to point that out as, as we bring on other departments, we're going to probably see the same things. We're kind of letting everybody know what, what's going to happen. So as I mentioned, uh, working with Ed Mirror and Shane in planning and inspections, they have their permits in testing. And as you can tell from having a high growth in numbers, you can't just throw the stuff out there. If you do, you'll probably create a mess, especially since we have things like floodplain, a lot of things that had been in person. So that's, that's going on now. They're looking at what that looks like from doing the zoning permit. And these are no cost permits as well. So they're going to still have to have staff review and happy to say that we've been working, you know, month on, months on end. With Adrian Pruitt and his staff to build out all the environmental health items. That's our next M Q. And then of course we'll look at fire after that, but are working with the vendor to build out all of those processes.
Is environmental health on that process now?
Yes, and these, the, the sample I have here, like the non-residential septic improvement, um, environmental health, new well permits. So they actually have these, they're building them out and they're running through the workflow to make sure, because you're having to ask. So basically anything that was a paper form, you're converting over to electronic, making sure you're flagging for all the right items. So soon as environmental health, health goes into a production status, then now you're getting into that online. So I guess I'll show the same, a similar map that we've seen. I think we've seen this same, same line multiple times, but this is from the data that we're putting into the system. So it's not all about deploying a technology solution, but how do you start working with it and use data to help make decisions and see where you need to go? Um, and so seeing the same thing. So I looked at a ten year, this is coming off of it for new home constructions permits issued. Um, and so, you know, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we were around that seven fifty, seven sixty mark. Twenty twenty-two for the new construction, and this is residential, hit the thousand mark. I think what's interesting here, and I did not draw this as a connected line, because we're only in February, the very beginning of February, but there's already two hundred and seventy-three. New construction permits issued for this year. So we're already where we were in the past years and we're only in month one. So again, kind of looking at it and then also with some of the data, and this is all data that can't get it in this exact format, but the heat map you can on the, the public facing site. Here's a heat map of the different areas as it's geo-coded for these new construction permits. So this is the last ten years. So again, looking at this, uh, trying to understand what the departments are going through, not just going through and issuing the permit, looking at it, but having data in a system that's accessible. So in progress items, and I've kind of mentioned this, is, uh, right now, there's three different departments. There's Tyler Munis, which we use for internal, that's what H R uses, that's what finance uses. There's tax, which is what Chip uses for all of his tax and tax collections. So they have a title product and then we have all the intergov. So behind the scenes, there's many different pieces that kind of bring all of these using similar components. Tyler payments is going to be one of those. So we're going to have a consistent platform for how tax is taking collections and what their staff do. They're going to be using a similar platform like they would in Munis. And then there's also a cashiering piece, but what this is doing, and we're starting with tax, because tax is already further along in the process, is getting the devices that are doing the receipt printing, check scanning. So those same components will be used in building inspections and, and planning as well. Uh, and then of course, the bigger thing there is actually, once you go through and you have a payment, you have everything ready and you need to pay. So you can be issued a permit that you'll be able to use with Tyler payments. So again, queuing up everything in line and going through the process. We've also gone through a process on the backend is through this is getting the system where it's storing all the documents and data that comes in, in a platform, we'll say D C M, Dollar Content Manager. That's allowing us to work with the health department for their scanning. They have money to basically remove all their file cabinets. So the years and years they have with their file cabinets, they'll be able to put that in. So we've started that, they're looking at pricing and we have the platform to put that in now. Uh, mentioned the digital plan review. Actually, Thomas and his staff and others are in the plan review, uh, training today. They, they had start, started last month ago, um, going through, I'm trying to think, we had every, all the different departments there. We brought in erosion control, fire, um, to look at what the plan review process looks like and would see when we move data back and forth. Like a, here's a plan that we're making two copies of, so they're actually going through training on that at this point. And then as stated, we have environmental health is in queue and then fire division for the permitting will be afterwards. So this is a multi-year process. I'll say this, um, just because I'm looking at it and trying to say, hey, what all has been going on, not just from a backend technical, but, um, we have definitely seen a twelve to eighteen month delay just in our vendors scheduling. I think last year in March or April, you approved Tyler payments. We have issued contracts, we haven't made any payments and we're just now getting to the point where they have assigned a project manager and they're going through the implementation process. And we're seeing this across the board, whether it's through tax or if it's through intergov and Munis, we went through an upgrade in December that was twelve months in the making, so.
Randy, um, a friend of mine wrote a very passionate Facebook, um, post this week about paying her taxes and by mail and having it go to Charlotte and then come back. Because the P O box is down there. And I'm like, because what ended up happening is of course it's, you know, five more days and expiration on a payment date. What is that all about and is that something we can fix?
I can tell you it's changing because we're changing the tax collection method. What that is, is a lockbox service. And Anna is shaking her head, so she knows way more.
Okay.
I know that, I, I knew how to say lockbox.
Yeah, so those lockbox services are housed in major cities with the big banks. And so that's, all that's getting directed where the lockbox is and then they process them.
Okay.
And so that's the bank.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the problem where the delay is?
So the delay is quite possibly just the U S P S. I mean, I had, my son had a tuition check, um, I mean, a scholarship check come in the mail from Wisconsin. It got mailed last Friday, we didn't get it till Saturday. It took.
A whole week.
It took a whole week to get that in the mail, just regular mail.
Congratulations.
I know, thank you. I was very excited. Now I've got to depend on him to get it to the school there, so. But I'm just saying like that's, I think the mail is just where the issue might be.
And I will say, and it might be on the tax bill, I'm trying to picture it in my head, but I think it's based on postmark date. So if you go by Salisbury here, uh, at the post office and you drop it, you know, drive by and drop it in, you're going to have a postmark that date. And so, I mean, I, I'm not going to speak for Chip at all, but I think that's a question that they could answer and say, is it based on postmark?
I, I'm going to forward back to you guys.
One thing I've heard, um, maybe Greg's heard this too, um, with direct mail, everything that you mail now here at this post office goes to Charlotte and comes back.
I think it was an issue.
So we, we've got, um, there's a specific case we're working through with environmental health and planning or permitting inspections. It's from several years ago. And I just, I want to make sure that this system we're doing is going to fix this. So someone builds a house, they put in that, that it's ready for a C O. So septic's in, well is in, um, permitting and inspections calls over to, uh, environmental health and says, hey, we're trying to issue the C O. Is everything good with the septic system? Person on the other end of the line and, um, environmental health says, yep, it's all good, we inspected, it's good to go. So they issue the C O. People move in, life is good. Few years later, they put their house up for sale. The bank, uh, the purchase, the, the purchaser's bank says, well, we need copies of, uh, the final, um, uh, environmental health. Inspection, the fi, the final permit for the septic system. And so no one could produce it. So evidently in, in the past, a lot of, hey, Bob, uh, hey Sally, is that septic permit, final septic permit issued? Oh, yeah, 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 it's all good. And so then we get into a mess down the road where we can't produce it because of, frankly, it was our failure. And so now, uh, in order to get that done, we got to dig up yards and inspect a two-year-old system. And it's, it's just a mess and it's all our fault. Um, um, I'm, uh, confessing that, that that's a problem and has been a problem in the past. And so I'm like, I tell you that to, to ask the question. In this new system, will that phone call have to even be made? Will the perm, we're permitting an inspection that is seeking to provide a certificate, certificate of occupancy? Will they be able to see those permits right in front of them or are they going to still have to call?
Yes, short answer, yes. They'll be able to see those, so any of the permits that go through the system, you'll be able to, well, you can see now, now we need to make sure we're dealing with process as well. Because if, just the fact. Because if, just the fact that they can see them, we need to make sure they are looking at that. But if there's a workflow that they need to check before issuing something. I think we've looked at that recently with, you know, Fire Division and what may be considered a CO versus a fire. A fire has gone through and issued their permits or they've done a plan review. So looking at it here on the screen of the applications, it's not just being able to call in and see that. Anyone will be able to see it. So if you do a new well permit, anyone from a public perspective can also look at that. So, and I, and I quite frankly, I actually use that a good bit instead of going into the application. If I'm working through, you know, some of the exceptions, I'm looking at the public facing side of it. So yes, and that's what's being built out here is what matches the proper permitting. Because if you go back to building inspections, there's been some simplification, especially in the fee structure with how you go through that process. But yes, short answer, when they're in and they're collecting permits and they'll also have that scan data as well. That'll be accessible. Yes. And I think that's all I have. Like I said, big, big thing on, the biggest takeaway there is we're definitely seeing the online. But I want to make sure everybody knew that when you start seeing that online, that that is a non-interactive. So any mistakes that are in those, they have to be callbacks and, and work through, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Director Muir, welcome.
Thank you. So what I'd like to do today is give you a brief overview of land use planning in the county. Begin with where we started, where I think we are, and more importantly, where we would like to go. 25 years ago, the county adopted countywide zoning. It became effective about a month later in February of 98. Interestingly enough, there was no real land use plan per se. What the, the map was based on was a survey that was done by staff. We use tax data. We drove every road in Rowan County and conducted a windshield survey of sorts. And developed a map that went along with it. We also have public input workshops throughout the county. So the map was based on, again, existing conditions, feedback from the public input. And the commissioners also weighed in on the economic corridors of 29 and 70 and 85 with regard to commercial and industrial designations. At the time, there was no statutory requirement that we have a land use plan. You just have to have two elements to adopt zoning. That was a map in the text and we certainly satisfied both of those requirements. So we have a couple of different plans now. The Western Land Use Plan was adopted by the commission in 2009. That was prepared by Benchmark. They're a private consulting firm. The Eastern Land Use Plan was done in 2012 and staff prepared that. The I-85 South Corridor was prepared by McGill. That was adopted by the commission in 2017. And currently we're working with WSP Engineering on a Long Ferry Road Corridor, which I hope will be completed very soon. In or around 2019, the General Assembly approved what is commonly referred to as the 160D requirements. And these consolidated municipal and county planning statutes and the land use plan requirement is found in 160D 501. What it basically states is that if a municipality or a county wishes to enforce zoning, they've got to adopt or maintain, reasonably maintain a land use plan. And it goes on to define what, what a land use plan is. It's intended to guide coordinated, efficient, orderly development within the county or town based on an analysis of present and future needs. So these ta- these terms of comprehensive plan and land use plan are generally interchangeable, but the statute does go a little bit into detail and tell us what a comprehensive plan is. That's when you get into the social, the economic, the housing elements and those type of things where a land use plan is just basically the land use and then what your recommendations are associated with it. These are typical things that would, the process would, would do. You'd inventory the existing conditions, look at what our future needs are, and then come up with some recommendations. The one thing that I would say that, that as staff, we would look for to be done here that, that's a little bit different than what we've seen across the region is we want some, some qualitative recommendations that this board and the planning board could use when they're assessing rezonings. You guys have been here a little while and you know that, that things that on the surface, when you read a planning report may seem okay. But then when you show up at the meeting, it seems like a completely different request. And so it's tough to judge that, especially when the application may meet the definition, the quantitative definition that's in the ordinance. So you're stuck with, well, how do we, how do we deny this? And so I would remind you that Shane recently put together some SNI recommendations. We did a good job a couple of years ago with the solar recommendations. Those are the kind of things that help the board determine if the use is appropriate, not just because it meets the definition or maybe some of those quantitative standards, but how do you judge if that's appropriate use in that area? The statute also tells us that you've got to have citizen engagement in the preparation and the adoption. And like everything else, it's got to go through the planning board as well as the Board of Commissioners. Randy showed you a very similar slide and this is kind of why we think it's an appropriate time to focus on a land use plan update. So this 10-year trend of zoning permits, you can see in the last five years, we've almost doubled the number of zoning permits that are issued by our office. We've gone from 576 and 18 to 936 in 2022. Now, this is just for Rowan County. This includes everything from the Sheeshed up to Chewy and that permit issuance. The bottom line, which is the preliminary zoning permit, that, that in my mind focuses more on residential growth. Those are the folks that come in and are going to need to visit environmental help to see if they can get a septic tank permit. And then they show back up in our office to get a zoning permit. So that line is really more indicative of what's going on in the county residentially. So in that same timeframe, remember Randy showed you the slide, I think it was 2022 that we had hit a thousand homes, new home construction in the county, countywide. Well, I would say that this is pretty indicative, again, of residential growth. We issued 476 residential permits in, in the county's jurisdiction. So that's not including the ETJ of nine, nine municipalities. And then that other town that, that does their own permitting. So there's a lot going on in the county right now. You couple that with our Rose Control Program, I thought this was interesting, something that I just found out last week. There are 49 active sites in the county. Those are sites that have more than one acre of disturbed area going on. Those are the ones that you see out there from Macy's to, you know, the two acre commercial project. They account for 703 acres. We've got 39 additional sites that have been permitted that have not started work. They account for 708 acres. So we've got more that have been permitted that haven't started than we've got active right now. And then there's eight pending sites. There are about 275. If you put all those together, once they start moving dirt, you've got over 1,600, almost 1,700 acres countywide. Again, land use planning is, is important. That perspective. We did sort of a cost comparison, probably not a comparison more, just to ask them what they've paid. Cabarrus doesn't have a recent plan, but what they tend to do is budget for small area plans. They use consultants to help their staff prepare it. They've indicated that they're somewhere between 115, $165,000 a piece. Davie County completed a project last year that was about 90,000. Iredale is currently in the process with a consulting firm and they're paying them 210,000. And Stanley County just recently finished theirs for 75. Davie and Stanley both used a cog. And Iredale and Cabarrus, as I just said, are using consultants. What we think is a pretty reasonable approach for the board to consider is that we've had a long-range planning position in the budget since July of last year. We have not been able to fill that position and we hope that we would get a person on staff and we could have started this process several months ago. We would have done it in-house, but it's difficult. The sheriff talked about, I think other folks would tell you it's, it's difficult to find folks that, that are qualified and do want to work. And so what we would offer is that we take that salary of about $80,000 and that includes benefits and put it together and put together an RFP for, for consulting services. And then I think with those responses, we'd have a good idea of where we are budget-wise, and there may need to be some additional money set aside for it, but that would be our recommendation from staff to the board to consider allowing us to put together an RFP for, for consulting services for a land use plan. Any questions?
I'm just really glad that we're having this conversation and really, I always say, living up to our own, our own rules and regs on, on erosion control and by hiring a contractor and consultant. It's when I drive around the county, there's various businesses that are out of compliance. And of course, one in particular that I think we all know, but we've got to get this under control, especially since we've got so much new development coming in and you know, if we allow so-and-so to skip out, then they're going to want the same, same deal. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Any other questions?
No, we'll wait to hear from you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess the, the one thing I would say is that during your discussion, I hope you give unanimous support so we'll be able to, to move forward. Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
We, we had a presentation a couple of weeks ago about farm land use preservation. Is that something that, that you would? What you're trying to get done here?
I think that will be a part of it. I don't think we're going to recreate that document and, and that's kind of a sidebar question. I'm not sure if this board is going to formally adopt that plan or not.
It's going to be asked to, to not today.
But in the future.
Weeks from now, they'll be brought back to the board.
So, you know, that, that's an interesting question. It's a, it's a, it's a good question too, because you don't really see the farm folks come in here to to enforce their plan or to get approval on their plan individually. What's going to happen is the development projects that come in are going to be relational to something that's in that plan. And those are the, the, the things that when the report is drafted, either the, the land use plan itself or the staff report, we will reference those particular action items or recommendations that are there for the board to consider. But I would tend to think that the plant, the, the farming community will be active when these discussions are being held about development that's happening in the county. I think Randy's heat map was interesting to see where development is occurring. I think we, we tend to sense that or know that, but, but when you see that on a map, it, it means a lot more to where, to know where those development pressures are occurring. So.
I'll just remind the board and everybody that the, the current land use plan that's being requested is an all voluntary request that it would not be increased zoning requirements. But it is just a volunteer, that owners want to be in a advanced land use plan.
Right. That, that's the enhanced voluntary agriculture district, right? Yeah. Or the, or the voluntary agriculture district. Yeah, those are voluntary in both cases, but they're, they're farming related, whereas, you know, we're going to focus on development and the, the bigger picture. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think we have one more presentation before lunch. If you guys are ready to power through, I think we have Pete here to talk about the new transit building. Is that right?
Hello, Pete.
Hello. My name is Pete Bogel. I'm with Bogel Farm Architects. We were tasked to look through some options for the transit center and the, the potential to replace the offices that are inside the Donnelly House. We're asked to do a budgeting exercise is really what this is about. Which is a lot of fun in today's bidding world. So the, the options we were told to look at were over in the agriculture building, just right across the street from the Donnelly House. There's a couple of spaces within that agriculture, within the Ag Center Building that could be repurposed. That would of course include moving some other folks out relocating them or consolidating. One area we were told to look at was in the current Fire Marshal's offices that are on the main floor. That's what you're looking at right now. This is the west end of this building. And budgeting exercise there showed that, well, back up just a little bit, we worked with the transit staff to develop a program of about how many office spaces they would need, the different meeting spaces for the drivers, things like that. Their purposes or their functions are mostly not public. There's nobody coming to visit them that is public. It's all either their staff or their drivers. And along with that program, we need some space outside of the building to park vans and preferred the vans be in a fenced-in area. So using those programs, or using that program, I looked at two places in the agriculture building and then one new construction option. The two areas in the Ag Building, west end and east end, this is the west end where the Fire Marshal offices are right now. We looked at this one on two different levels. One, move in, just like it is, actually three different levels. One, this one is move in, just like it is with some minor finishes, you know, while the offices are empty. Replace the carpet, replace ceiling tiles, things like that, repaint. Budgeting for this total square footage of about 2,000 square feet with new office furniture, you see that line in their furniture fixtures. The total budget for the vans, the parking lot and a little bit of outfit, we're projecting somewhere between 32,000 to 44,850. And then with some office furniture and then contingency on top of that. See the total for this low line item is 54 to 73,000 roughly. If we do a little bit of outfit in that same end, this is minimal outfit, just tearing out a few walls, adding in a couple of new walls. This fits their program needs better, gives them the spaces that, that they actually need. Instead of just trying to put them into some existing offices. Again, the office outfit and, and we're using some square foot numbers right now. Not knowing exactly how this is going to develop out, but these are reasonable budget, square foot numbers for what we're seeing. This would include moving around, relocating some HVAC grills, but not a new system. It includes relocating electrical as needed, but again, not new systems. So total with the vans again, outside of the, that's a fixed cost, same as the last one. Furniture fixtures is a fixed cost as well. And then a 10% contingency, 120 to 183,000. And then tearing out all of the walls in this end of the building, still in that west end. New HVAC, new electrical from the panel, from a sub panel on that end. Looking at. Hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty dollars a square foot. And then the exterior costs, same furniture fixtures and contingency, that total overall, these again are budget prices. What we like to do with budgets is budget up here, deliver under that budget. But three oh seven to three twenty-six as a range. Moving over to the east end, also in the Ag Building. These are spaces that would become available when agricultural department actually moves out over to Weston Plaza.
Excuse me, Pete. Could you blow up the stuck part of it? No. Derek, can you make the green part bigger? I'm just not good. Thank you. That helped.
Right there, there we go. Alright, so these are from the old plans from the original Ramsey Associates plans. So these these would be, again, when these, when this group moves out, the transit could move in. This. Is just assuming that we're going to reuse the spaces as they are. So now I need to zoom back out so we can see the budgets. Budget line items here again in that ten to fifteen dollar a square foot range, just to refresh some finishes. And again, using the same cost for vans and a fenced parking area. See, the sub totals here are forty-six thousand, sixty-five thousand. And this is one of those things of, could you just move in just like it is, except for the van cost? Yes, you could, and that's, but if we're trying to budget, making this into a space that's going to, while it's empty. Function for years to come, then we would suggest, you know, putting some new finishes, just new touches in there.
Do you have any estimates as to the time it would take?
That's all dependent on, of course, when this department moves out. That's the biggest timeframe there. This kind of work though, this is, this is weeks, not months. This, this is just upfitting. Really, it'd take more time to get the materials here than it would to install them, especially in today's market. And then again, a fixed cost of around seventeen thousand to twenty-two thousand for fixtures, furniture, equipment. That's again, if you wanted to use the same furniture that that they're using existing, but it's not in good shape. I'd encourage you to go see what's in the Donnelly House. It's. It should stay there. And then so contingency and then a total budget of almost seventy thousand to ninety-six thousand. And then doing some outfits in that end of that building. Upfits in that end of the building are actually pretty easy because most of the spaces that are there would fit with what they need. We would need to tear out one wall here to create a larger gathering training area. Another wall over here to create the dispatch area, another wall here to connect these dispatch areas. So that's why our. Per square foot numbers here are a little lower than what they were in the previous ones. This again does not get a new HVAC. May move some grills around, things like that, but total budget here, one forty-four to two oh eight. And then if we built everything new within this same area, including new HVAC, including newer electrical. Everything else in. Around a one twenty-five to one thirty for the building per square foot, which is going to be a total. Budget of around five hundred to five twenty-six. Then the last option we were told to or asked to look at was a new facility in front of the Donnelly House. There's a large grassed area. In front of the Donnelly House, they're on Old Concord Road. There's definite advantages of this and the the access road is already there. We would have to build a new parking lot. That thirty-four spaces that we're showing. The existing back parking lot is is there. This would need to be. Or this is the fenced back parking lot back here. This, we're showing as many parking spaces as we thought we could get there. We believe that's. More than sufficient. This could actually be scaled back some. But just as a budgeting exercise, thought we would max that out for you. And the request was, again, the program, how many, you know, based on the program of the spaces they've requested, came out to about twenty-four hundred square feet. It's a small building. Worked with staff to revise a layout or develop a layout that got them what all they needed. They were able to combine the dispatch space up here. At the front and then some offices, four private offices with a workroom off the center corridor. The gathering training room. And then they wanted one large room in the back that had a garage door on it, mostly for file storage or other stuff, storage. Parts for vans or minor things for vans that that kind of thing. And then their file room is actually over here. Total budgets on those, price per square foot was based on some other small offices that we've been doing here recently. Parking lots, same, based on recent bids. And site prep as well. Total overall budget, seven hundred and eleven thousand to eight hundred and eighteen. Numbers are a lot bigger these days. They they just are, and that's a, an interesting thing that we're trying to. To adjust to as bid prices keep going up. But these are based on some very recent projects. We did a project in Moxville that is a small office building for an industrial client. This is very similar to that. This structure could be a pre-engineered metal building. It's a little small. Pre-engineered metal buildings. When you get into the five thousand square foot range is when those become the most cost economical or cost efficient model. More likely this would be a framed building with a a truss roof, could be metal frame as well. That's probably where we would suggest. But for budgeting exercises, those would be a very similar cost anyway. I would take any questions at this point.
Well, I don't know if this is a question for you, Pete, or if it's for our manager. Okay, this is like, I'm behind. This is the first I've seen or heard of this. My question is, is if we move across the street and just do the minimal. Is that a place where it's going to stay? Or is it going to need a new, new facility later on?
I can't answer that.
Can.
I don't know that anybody can because. That that's, I mean, you're talking about for infinity, if that were.
There's nothing infinity of what we do, but. I'm just saying that, okay, so if we move in there and we do the minimum. Perhaps while we're doing other projects. Then is it something that can wait? I mean, I I don't know what's going on over here in the Donnelly House, so.
Yeah, the the employees need a new space sooner than later because of the the. The condition of the Donnelly House. The option, the first option has employees in it. So that's, you know, you would, if you did, and when I say the first option, that is it the east?
The west end with the.
The way.
Fire Department.
Yes, the west option, that's that's always been occupied, so. You know, I EMS probably, I mean, they need that space. The other space, which is calling the east. That space will be vacated by cooperative extension. The question is, is that space that. Emergency service is going to need ten or fifteen years down the road, and I I don't know the answer to that. If it's, it's like everything else, we're, we're not shrinking.
Yeah, well, and and I guess that's my point, you know, it's it's like. If it's not going to. In ten years be the space we need, can we just do the minimal and then. You know, plan for the expansion in the future. Because I think in hearing from EMS, it was my understanding that they were looking to take over that role first.
They probably could.
Especially within ten years. Okay, thanks.
What's what's the, we've got a lot of sheets here and I'm trying to. Put them all together. Royan Transit Systems conceptual construction budget. And then. Last page on that, for instance, says Donnelly House. So I'm trying to match up. This Donnelly House with the option five. That has the Bogel firm on it.
Right, so we we did some recent updates on the presentation. But I didn't go back and update these sheets. I didn't know these were going to be in your packet.
So it was six twenty-three and now it's eight eighteen. Did I get a copy of that? Oh, we've had it the whole time.
So the. Yes, the the ones on the, the ones with the floor plans beside of them, those are the updated numbers.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman. One thing I would point out. That is. Concrete, if you will, is that. The option five does provide what's included in that cost is a lot of earthwork for additional parking that we don't currently have. So that is a concrete tangible thing that the renovations of option. Of any other option does not include any, it doesn't include any new pavement, does it, Pete?
The other options do not include new pavement.
Yeah, so you got to really, you know, if if you take out, you know, you are getting additional. Concrete that we don't have right now and that. So it's not really apples to apples. Does that make sense?
Mr. Chairman, what hasn't been discussed too is the idea behind putting in the new parking lot. Is to get all the vans off of school property, which is the top of the hill. Because they keep having the catalytic converter stolen all the time because they're just parked out in field. And we're paying the school system forty-two hundred dollars a year to to park our equipment up there. So it's, it's just not very efficient use and. Like the sheriff was talking earlier, if the economy goes down, we'll probably go out there one day. There won't be any catalytic converters on them. Because there's no, there's no fencing around the current property. And what we did, and and I'll thank Don Bringle for helping me, we met with transit four or five times. To get a concise idea of what they need. Then we asked Pete to design a building that is time moved forward. If we needed to expand, it would have that expandability and that's the reason we decided to try to put it on the current property because it already, we own the property. Water and sewer is already on site and it offers plenty of land that is, as we all know. The aging process in this county is is always going to continue to go up and we're going to need more and more transportation. So we wanted to build something that as time went on, it wouldn't be obsolete. And that's what concerns me about doing across the road. Is we're already taking out all the available space that's there and we're not looking toward, like Commissioner Klusman said, we're not looking toward the future. What are we going to have twenty-five years from now? At least this building can be added on to and give us ample. Space as the future moves on. So I realize it's more expensive than the other options, but is it really in the long term view of what the county is going to need for its transportation needs?
I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Pierce. My question to Pete is, is when you go across the street. Is there more land for us to be able to put more parking and fence it up?
There's a little bit. It's tight.
It's tight. Have you figured any kind of estimate spaces?
No, have not.
I'd be curious about that.
But Pete, well, I don't think you're considering, or maybe you are, I'll do, because we haven't talked about it. Is when you demolish the current Conley House, then you've got all that property that can be used for future expansion.
That's exactly right, and that is how you would expand this building. It would take some some costs to demolish the Donnelly building, Donnelly House and then fill the basement that's there. But that is the direction you would expand this, so you do have expandability with that site.
Right, my my question is just simply. Do we have to do it right now? Can we do it in steps? If it only takes fifty thousand to repaint and whatever. And then be able to get in there in a couple of weeks, to me, there's some value in that too. But I understand the catalytic converter problem. But obviously. We've got some other capital projects that are on the the board and I'm just wondering, you know, what the options, other options are. Thank you.
You know, if there is. You know, you're dealing, you know, we're dealing with transit and we get a lot of federal funds for that. If there's any sort of. Grants that might be available for new construction over repurposing.
I don't know of any, and especially for a a government body, it would be hard to find one.
Mr. Kaski, I reached out to Senator Ford about a month ago. And he's looking into what the state would provide because this is still related to the COVID incident. He said if we had any cares dollars left, this does qualify. But he is looking at not only state, but also reaching out to our senators to see if there's any federal money that could be possibly used. And then Chairman Ed's also put it on the list for our lobbyists to see if there's monies available. So yes, we are looking at other alternatives here. But my my big concern is. I would venture to say I'm the only commissioner that's been over to the Conley House or Donnelly House, and you need to go over and just see what conditions these people are working in. It's absolutely ridiculous. And the reason that it's been put off for so long is up until about three to four years ago. This was not a county department. It was funded strictly by the federal grant, so therefore. The county didn't have any input into what went on in this program. Well, now it is a county department. And I don't think it's fair for these people to have to work in these conditions in a hundred plus year old house that's a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Two years ago to upfit it just to make it handicap accessible. It's obvious that there it needs to be a new facility. So do we go spend fifty thousand dollars and then two years from now have to spend this money again and it's double the price? Or do we go ahead and get this done and and put it behind us and and have something that our county can be proud of as far as. Where our, where our employees work and what they do for this county. So that's my argument. To me, if you build for the need, you don't ever waste the money.
All of these other options of going across the street still have to wait, right?
They would, yep.
Yeah, so that's, yeah. There is no, well, in a couple of weeks, right? Yeah.
None that I know, I mean, that's. What was presented to us and Mr. Pierce is right that the. The the occupied spaces would be harder to fill. We don't have a place to to Tetris the, those folks. We don't have a place to Tetris the, those folks around until, you know, they have another place. The, the West End, the, the West End, not the West, the West plan that I had here is dependent on finding those folks another place. And that wasn't presented to us. So there is no answer there other than we were asked to budget those spaces.
Maybe we can build them a place across the street.
Right, but that's, you're hitting exactly it. It's, it's a Tetris effect at that point of this goes there, this goes there. You're chasing yourself.
We said that this is expandable and it appears it is because it's gone up four hundred square feet already, right?
Right, they, they asked us to.
That was the request from the director because we did not have adequate storage for long-term files that are required for the federal grant monies to be on site. So that's why we added that small garage on the end.
That's good.
That's really curious in this time and in this day and time that it's not scanned into a computer versus still putting paper and filing documents. Is that still a federal requirement?
We were told by the director that it had to stay on site, okay? The last thing I want to do is build a building and it doesn't fit the need.
Yeah. Pete, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate it. What are we going to do, Craig? We going to talk about this more?
Well, I, I think we could wait until budget to put it in. And I think that's the precedent we need to set, especially with all these other mid-budget requests that are coming in. We need to demonstrate that this board will do what it needs to when it's time.
Within budget.
But at the same time, I would like to see us go ahead and move forward with getting a firm estimate, not just a shotgun price, so that when we do budget the money, we'll know exactly what we need to get.
I don't know how to do that.
Well, we'd have to put it on the next meetings to put it out for pricing.
Okay, we'll work with, yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll work with Aaron and.
Well, and Don Bringle's been involved in this too, so he can help you navigate where it needs to go.
All right, moving on.
Great, ready for lunch?
Yes.
All right, so we're, I think you guys have sandwiches and everything set up in the room.
So, yeah.
And, and during this time, just take the opportunity to talk with each other about those special topics that you wanted, that you all discussed with me. This is an opportunity for you to discuss those with each other, with Aaron, whoever else might be in the room. And then we'll reconvene in about an hour, maybe a little bit less since we're running a little behind schedule.
We are, we're having a working lunch here. And I'm crunching on Cheetos, so I'll try to mute myself. But usually a time during, and we're, we're, we're running behind a little bit. So why don't we take these next few minutes and kind of talk about what things you guys want to talk about for prioritization for this year or what you're interested in? So whoever wants to go first, Mike?
I'll be quick. First thing I, I've, just want to make a quick update. I've told Justin several times recently about the Veterans Court. And he thinks that we're getting pretty close now to go ahead and we can try to ask for our, get the grants this year. Do you think that we can probably, if everything goes in the direction it's headed now, they can launch in July twenty-four? So we're, over the next year, getting it prepared. So he's working with the new, you know, we had a lot of judges switched out and the new clerk of court. And so he's had to work with them, you know, try to get everybody, see where all that they are on it. So everything seems to be going well. And I'm sure at some point he'll come and give us more of a formal presentation. But right now it looks like we can go ahead and try to get the grants and then hopefully be up and going by the July twenty-four. The two, there's two other things I wanted to mention real quick. One is I think they've, they've kind of unofficially, the emergency services unofficially been looking for land in the southeast part of the county for our next EMS station. And I like to talk about us just going ahead and giving them the formal, hey, go ahead and find us something. That part of the county is growing, of course, and land's not getting any cheaper down there. And then trying to find the right land is also going to be an issue. So I like us talk about, go ahead and give them the go-ahead to find us something. Even if we, even if we're not going to build the station for a few more years, go ahead and get the land up where we need to be done in that area. And then the third thing.
Where, where are they looking?
So the southeast is kind of like, kind of like the Boston Heights Fire District area on the east part of the interstate, southern part of the county. Then that's the next area where they need to work on the cost for service. Plus a lot of growth down there they expect over the next decade. So that's where they've been looking. But I think they just kind of been looking and if they found something, then they would come to us. But I, I would like us to go ahead and kind of formalize, hey, go ahead and find something that way. It'd be more, a little more urgent for them and then they know that they're not wasting their time. They could find something. Then the third thing I want to talk about is, I know we've already budgeted for the last several years for whatever the school system's going to do with Knox. I know that's, hasn't been done yet. But talking to some of the board members, school board members, I know that probably South Rowan Elementary School would be the next thing they're going to look at. And they have the land there, down there across from Staggendo, the camp that they already own. And so I told Aaron a little bit about it. What I'd like for us to think about is go ahead and kind of do what we did with the mall and create a, an account. Go ahead and start getting a line item in there for that now, even if it's five or six years down the road. Then add a little bit to it each year. And so by the time that they're ready to do something, we'll already have maybe, you know, a million or two dollars in that account. And then we'll have, you know, whatever we build up to each year as a, as a revenue source to go ahead and we have to borrow money for that school. So that's, that's probably going to be five or six years. Well, who knows the growth that may come, but go ahead and get something in there, get that started. And I think Aaron said we can't officially say it's for that, but I think that's the direction that they're headed next. But it would, they have the land and they're going to need the capacity. And so I think go ahead and plan that out a few years. So when it's time to actually borrow money for the next school, it won't be as painful for us budget-wise.
Well, it takes a lot of money to even be doing the planning part of that. Yeah, yeah, a few million. So you can have that set aside. I know that a few weeks ago, a couple of us met with some school folks. And one thing we talked about is just giving us an overview and maybe physically mapping out all the schools, looking at their age and their certainly looking at capacity. And then working with EDC in our planning department. Like we've seen this heat map. We ought to overlay that heat map on our school system. And because frankly, the schools terrify me from a financial standpoint. There's been times when I've spoken with County Commission Chairman from Cabarrus County, and he's offered us a few subdivisions if we'd like to take them. And we're, we kid about that, but we certainly have capacity around the county. But the, the schools can get us in trouble really, really quickly. So they're working on that and something I think we need to look ahead on.
Because I know that, I guess what, the last elementary we built was thirty-four, six million. I'm sure the next one's going to be at least fifty, just for an element, so. I didn't try to get ahead of that a little bit. That's all I had, those three things I wanted to bring up.
Okay, Jim?
I would like to see more coordination through systems. As an example, they spent a million dollars on blueprints or a building that I don't think that they could ever afford or we could afford. Like I'm doing association or something. Like a million. I just think that they and we together can do a better job planning for a school. But that's opinion was not worth very much. It struck me when I was talking, or Kelly was talking about it, when we were in, it already spent a million dollars on drawings for the ops.
Thank you.
But this year, we're going to be able to get started on our parking land is that we get together.
Wouldn't it?
I say.
Not an announcement. Mayor of Landis is calling already.
Excuse me, I, I can't get out of the South Rowan Inn. But Woodley, I'd like to see that. We've got enough money to get. Don's going to let bids in the next couple of weeks on Woodley, aren't you, Don? I've been working on trying to because I've talked with the chairman and I've talked about up with the school super or with pre-kids, pre-K kids some manner, because every superintendent that I ask them why third crater, third graders can't read. Certain percentage of them can't read. They'll tell me that they're not prepared. They get there in kindergarten. I, I want to try to work with those educators and preschool, Smart Start, those folks that might have additional positions. I don't know the answers to it now. I know that everybody is willing and willing to talk about what we could do. That is something that I'd like to try to go forward with and see if we can prove that in some those kids have hard enough time. Wirements, and come in and can't burn a book the right way to start reading. Ever been exposed to books or letters or numbers or anything? Just never get caught up when they're, when they're that's something I'd like to see us work.
I think I'll write them down for you.
Oh, Judy. No, 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 no. I wouldn't do that.
Commissioner Green, thank you for saying that about our young ones serving on the Smart Start Board, reading his Becky, as we all know, to life. So okay, so just a little bit of an update for the, let's see, now it's called the Rowan County Version Center. Oh, excuse me. Rowan County Behavioral Health Advisory Committee would like to update you on the following things. We are in the process as of Friday of interviewing three providers who have submitted RFIs and are interested in running the running the center for the county. I want to emphasize one more time that the county is not going to be running this. This is going to be an outside organization, which is why the United Way and Novant have been a big part of planning of this. So, but I'm very excited. Mike Kaski and I have both been invited to serve on the selection committee for the provider. And hopefully by the end of the weekend, we will have a provider chosen, which will then allow us to get our business plan together, working with them our operational budget, sustainability plan, and the advocacy for funding through North Carolina State Budget and also the federal government cares money. So, yeah, so January, February, we did the selection process. March is going to develop accurate budget for the diversion center and adopt the business and sustainability plan. And then May and June is when we want to go full bore on lobbying our state and local state and federal legislators to help us fund this. And it's my understanding that there's quite a lot of money on the federal level through DOJ and other other departments that are putting grants out there. And I'm so thankful for Ann, who's helping us try to, trying to get through that. So I'm hoping we can have a shovel in the ground or be remodeling a building by the end of the year. And then as far as our health department, the big thing there is just to get and get the the new facility put together out at West End Plaza. We, because of the changes that the pandemic brought, we can no longer afford to have people who are ill sitting in the same room with a mother who is there, is pregnant and, you know, waiting for WIC benefits to apply for those. We've got dentist suites that are too small for two people to, the dentist and the hygienist to be in the room at the same time without having to move equipment around. So there's a lot of little things, but we've got people that our conference room is still an office room for I don't know how many different employees. But ABW did a wonderful job in working with our Director of Public Health, Ms. Harris, and also our Board President, Daria Caldwell. So, yeah, I think that that is where we're at. It's good to know that our COVID numbers are going down again. And the most accurate way of, of telling what you have in your community is by taking samples at the sewer, sewage system. So, yes, because it comes out in their poop. I thought you'd be impressed, anyway. So we're doing well there. And my biggest, one of my biggest concerns is that on April first, So we're doing well there and, um, my biggest, one of my biggest concerns is that, uh, on April 1st, the, uh, Medicaid. Guaranteed Medicaid is going to be stopping and in North Carolina, there's going to be 345,000 people that will drop from the rolls immediately. I don't know how many will be here in our county, but we're going to have to go back and, um. Certify each one and for those that are falling off because of income in eligibility. Um, I'm hoping that we can get them connected with our health department, so at least it can have some basic, um, healthcare and, um. So, yeah, if you want, uh, more of a description of what's going on with our Rowan County diversion center. I've got a two-page memo from Jenny Lee, the director of United Way. And of course, uh, we are connecting all these things together through DSS and health. And hopefully our, um. Judicial and justice system, um, as far as the diversion part of our center. So that's where we're at. Oh yes, and I am going to be asking for some money. But like Mike, you know, to put it in a fund, so when we finally get there, and I'm only going to ask for a million.
All right, anyone else? Anything else? All right. What is, uh, does this come up later? The, um, or is that just for information? The, uh. Driving center thing?
Oh no, he.
Driver training.
Driver training.
Presentation.
For our information. Well. I'm. I wasn't prepared to make a.
Okay, that's fine. No, I just saw it there.
Yeah, th- this is, uh, our, our drive, our CDL. Truck, tractor trailer driver training schools is, uh, exploding at Ron Cabarrus. And, um. Their challenge is, uh, actually a location because you have to have. I grew up in a time where y- you actually had a big paved area, uh, for drivers ed, you know, and the local dealers donated cars and there were 12 cars out there and you drove in circles. For a whole semester, right? Well, that's what they need for truck driver training. So they lost their spot, uh, some time ago, and so right now they're doing truck driver training at Westin Plaza. You'll see tractor trailers parked over there at night and on the weekends. So they would like to expand their program, but they know that when the Westin Plaza remodeling is complete, they'll once again be without a home. So they're trying to come up with a, uh, answer to that. One answer could be some land that is attached. To Ron Cabarrus Community College, uh, between Julian Road and the college, uh, there behind, um. The fairgrounds, so they're just beginning that conversation on perhaps what that might look at and. Like other things we've talked about today, we do have a state and federal lobbying team. And so we've, uh, sent them a list of things that we are interested in pursuing and that is, uh, one of those things on that list. So that's all we've got. Emily?
Right. Very productive working lunch. Hopefully not too much crunching in the mics. Um, I think we're going to hear from the Economic Development Commission now and hear some progress updates on how things have been going.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, thank you for allowing us to present here today. Our CEO Rod Kreider sends his regrets. He's a little bit under the weather, so I'm going to have to, uh, fill in. But, uh, as you are aware, uh, the Rowan EDC through its Ford Rowan campaign has adopted the key goals of. Increasing prosperity, reducing poverty and improving the quality of life, uh, for all of our citizens. And we've adopted, uh, four strategies to help us achieve these goals. And so what I'd like to do is briefly go over, uh, these goals and what we've done in the past year to help accomplish them. But next slide, please. Uh, first strategy is targeted economic growth. Basically, we're trying to increase prosperity through our business retention and attraction efforts. Key objectives include growing our existing businesses, which is the most important one, obviously. Also attracting new firms, but also maintaining our competitive local advantages, the things that make Rowan County attractive to, uh, current and potential businesses. Next slide, please. Uh, these were the targets that we, uh, targets for jobs, new investment in wages. That we established for our five-year Ford Rowan campaign, uh, and as you can see, these numbers have already more or less been met. Uh, we had a goal of 2,500 jobs. Right now we stand at just under 3,700 new jobs created. A goal of $350 billion of new investment in Rowan County. Right now we're sitting at 605 million. And also we wanted to attract jobs that had a wage that exceeded what we considered at the time to be a living wage and right now we're at. $18.31. Uh, the goal at the time was $15.86. Next slide, please. Over the past year, we had some notable project wins. On the, uh, existing industry expansion side, we had, uh, stout heating and air. New York Air Brake and Eastern Wholesale Fence, who actually just moved here to Rowan County back in 2020, so they're a really good, uh, early success story. Uh, on the expansion, I'm sorry, the recruitment effort, of course, we had, uh, Macy's, which I'm sure you've all heard about, but also, um. Bosmere, which is a company that makes or distributes gardening supplies. They took over the former Parkdale Mills building on South Main Street in Salisbury. Next slide, please. Overall this past year, our project activity was strong. Um, we get most of our leads for new projects through the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. And then, of course, the Charlotte Regional Business Alliance. Some of them also come from direct outreach to the company or the company, uh, connecting with us. Uh, our utility partners, also referrals by other, uh, industries in Rowan County. This year we had 162 leads from all of these sources. Of that 162 leads, we qualified for 104, which means we had a building or a site that met the company's criteria. Also, company visits trended back upwards, uh, to the highest number since before COVID. We had 22 visits, uh, in Rowan County over the past year. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, uh, our existing industries are our number one priority. We have a couple of strong programs to help, uh. facilitate that, of course, expand Rowan, which is the effort that Kendall Henderson and Rod Kreider lead in our office to visit our existing companies and make sure their needs are being met and help them however we can. There were a total of 45 visits over the last calendar year and these generated about 63% of our project wins. And there's also the Rowan County Manufacturing Network, which, uh, offers programs for existing companies. Uh, opportunities to converse and network through our network meetings, uh, to share data such as our manufacturing wage survey. And also to celebrate successes and recruit new, uh, potential employees through the manufacturing day and manufacturing week activities. Next slide, please. Um, as you're aware, a lot of our property in Rowan County has been tied up in the past year through spec development. Uh, but of course, we're always trying to identify, uh, new sites and enhance our existing ones, and these are some of the efforts we did over the past year. Uh, you see there were three sites in the county, one in Granite Quarry, one in Spencer, one in Cleveland. Where we had endangered species reports done on the properties, also cultural resource assessments, which is historical or archaeological studies. Uh, in addition to that, we asked our friends at Duke Energy to pay for some updated renderings for the brown site in Cleveland. They've, uh, acquired some additional acreage, which increased the size of that site. So the renderings there at the time that were done back in 2015 were, uh, not as relevant as they could be, so we got the new ones done to show the potential for this site, which, uh, could show up to like over a 1 million square foot building on the property. And that is a pretty, uh, popular site as far as, uh, potential projects right now. We hope to land something there in the next year or so. Uh, next slide, please. I mentioned the spec development. I know Rod's talked about that since he's been here. Right now, right now we're sitting about 22 million square feet of potential space in Rowan County and it's, it's pretty much every interchange except for in a street in the county. Some of that is in larger, um, chunks such as the, uh, 4.4 million square feet of space being talked about at Old Beatty Ford Road and. Of course, the Red Rock Project that the commissioners are aware of on Long Ferry Road. That along with some other, uh, potential projects on that corridor could lead to another nearly 5 million square feet of building space. Um, we're not going to sit, sit here and say that all this could happen, but as we've talked about, even if half of it does happen, looking at 11 or 12 million square feet of space in Rowan County of the next few years. Next slide, please. Uh, the second strategy is talent attraction and development. That's the primary concern we hear from our, uh, companies is the need for quality employees. So, uh, we're trying to address that best we can through, uh, several objectives, uh, aligning our education and workforce systems to make sure that they're, um. Understanding what needs to be done to train the next generation of workers, uh, develop our homegrown talent, make sure Rowan County folks stay here once they get out of school. Um, again, retain the best and brightest workers and of course attract new individuals to Rowan County as well. Next slide, please. Uh, in 2022, some of the things that were done is, uh, there was the launching of the new talent attraction website. Uh, to speak to the positives in Rowan County for potential workers to come here and getting them in contact with others who can share what they found since they moved here or, you know, general things about quality of life in Rowan County. There's also the, uh, work in Rowan Job Portal, which kind of, uh, consolidates all the job listings for companies in Rowan County into one searchable database. I think that's done pretty well so far. Another event which, uh, is, I think is kind of neat, the, uh, first ever career signing day with Rowan Salisbury Schools. You know, you see in the news where these athletes sign with colleges. It's the same principle, just for someone signing with the Rowan County, County company, you know, high school senior. It's, I think it's a lot of fun and, uh, sheds a new light on this type of, uh, activity. Um, I mentioned the Rowan Education Collaborative. Uh, also, um, one thing we did too is provide a community briefing to, uh, our, uh, partners about economic opportunity, um, for, um. A diverse group of Rowan County citizens through the opportunity and inclusivity analysis that was done in late 2021 but presented last year. Um, and, uh, that study is available for anybody who needs it if you don't have it already. One interesting, interesting note too is in June, our labor force grew to just under 68,000 people. That's the highest it's been since December 2009. And demonstrates our workforce is recovering since the, uh, Great Recession. Next slide, please. Uh, strategy three is brand identity and storytelling and of course that goal is just to, uh. Share our message to not just people outside of Rowan County, but inside Rowan County as well. Uh, we tried to utilize the brand launch that was done several years ago and incorporate that into everything we do and hope our partners will do the same. Uh, of course, we're promoting Rowan County to our external audiences, but also trying to build community product. I know this has been discussed before, but try to help overcome past negative images that our own citizens had about Rowan County. While this was done through the Your Rowan, um, site, which of course the commissioners in the county are currently allocating money toward each year. Next slide, please. So in 2022, some of our media coverage included, uh, the Macy's project. That was a big one. Uh, we received recognition for that. It was named one of the top 10 projects in North Carolina for 2022 by Business North Carolina Magazine. Also, just recently, the Charlotte Business Journal named it one of the top 25 stories the past year. And another recent development was it was named as a, uh, corporate investment and community impact award winner from Trade and Industry Development Magazine. And besides that, we tried to target, uh, what we think are really, uh, high potential growth sectors for Rowan County, including ag bio science and the EV industry. And, uh, on a, uh, more regular note, we try to update everyone in the county best we can through our bi-weekly, uh, newsletter. And also there's a monthly update, kind of an at-a-glance stats, uh, heady update. I think the board is getting down to other elected officials in Rowan County. Next slide, please. Uh, and another, um, example of our positive coverage is for the second consecutive year, we were named a top location in North America for food processing. Through Business Facilities Magazine, um, number eight in, in the, uh, North America rankings for metro areas. Also the number two location in the southeast and number four on the entire US East Coast. And through that, we tried to promote, uh, some of our positive resources for, um, food processes such as the available farmland, our heavy water resources. Some of our existing food processing companies like, you know, Cheerwine or Food Lion or Patterson Farm or Carolina Malt House. So, uh, that was a, a nice bit of coverage there. Uh, and again, uh, as I mentioned, trying to leverage our local assets, this was a mailer that was sent out, uh, last year, uh, this past year for ag bio science. Uh, let's make the food of the future. And again, that tries to capitalize on the things I mentioned, along with the, uh, North Carolina Research Campus and the Food Innovation Lab there in Kannapolis. Next slide, please. Uh, I'm sure you're aware of recent announcements, uh, regarding Vinfast and Toyota in North Carolina, uh, your major, um, potential for EV manufacturing in our state and. Uh, along with our strategic location, we think it's given us, uh, opportunities to recruit suppliers to Rowan County for the EV industry. Uh, Toyota wants their suppliers to be a certain distance from the mega sites. They're not competing for the same workers and. Our approximate one hour distance from that mega site gives us a lot of potential, uh, for these suppliers and so far it's paying some early dividends. We've had multiple visits to Rowan County from potential Toyota suppliers. We think one of those is going to happen here at some point soon. It's just too good of a location for it not to happen. Next slide, please. And the final strategy is high-performance service delivery, actually making the EDC the best organization it can be. Through increasing awareness of what we actually do in the community, uh, also trying to retain and recruit, you know, quality staff members. And just continue to, uh, enhance our service levels to find the best benefit, uh, to our, our customers, that being the community and our existing industries. Next slide, please. And to that end, in 2022, uh, I mentioned the Ford Rowan campaign. We actually exceeded $1.5 million in private sector support. That's. 152% of our original campaign goal. Uh, two of our EDC staffers, Rod Kreider and Kendall Henderson, assumed leadership roles within the Charlotte Regional Business Alliance. Uh, Rod, of course, was named as the, um, as one of the Power 100, uh, of the Charlotte Business Journal a few weeks ago. And finally, as you're aware, our existing, um, marketing person, Jay Garner relocated to Florida, so we hired Molly Rue formerly with Miller Davis to assume that role and she's hit the ground running. Next slide, please. Uh, I mentioned the private, private partnership in Ford Rowan. Uh, again, these are the numbers for the, uh. Cash, uh, um, investment goal of, uh, 1.5 million, um, that I mentioned earlier. Uh, again, it's exceeding our campaign goal and also our stretch goal. And there to your right are some of the partners at various, uh, contribution levels. Next slide, please. So with the success, uh, that Rowan County is seeing right now and just all the new eyes set on us from our, um, our, uh. I guess success stories and also potential for future growth, that does come with challenges and I'm sure the board's aware of. Uh, some of the ones we see are infrastructure, uh, you know, planning for this future growth, whether it's water, sewer, schools, roads. Housing is a concern as well, where we're going to find housing for all these new workers and the folks relocating to Rowan County. Um, and then, um, place making and branding, continue to reinforce the positive image of Rowan County to everyone. And finally, um, continuing to be business friendly in planning, permitting and incentives. Uh, an example of that, of course, is the county's guaranteed review timeline of, you know, uh, certain number of business days for commercial permit reviews. That's an example of, you know, a business friendly atmosphere that has resonated with some of our clients. We'd like to continue to build that momentum, uh, going forward in the next year or so. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so in closing, EDC greatly appreciates the support of Rowan County, uh, and like to continue to move forward and I'll be happy to answer, uh, any questions.
Scott, thank you. This is a very positive, wonderful report about our county. It's been wonderful to be working with you for the last eight years, so looking forward to the future. Um, when we look at reducing poverty and improving the quality of life. I guess I would just like to mention a couple of things that actually Rod and I have talked about before. And, um, one of them is our lack of childcare and, um. In talking with some of the school personnel, um. You know, one of the things that might be very helpful for us is that K3, um, classrooms around our county. So it doesn't take the place of childcare, but at least it helps. Um, it also helps in, in getting kids ready for kindergarten when it comes to reading, but it, that and then also, um. I know healthcare is, is one that's kind of a touchy issue and some, some of our, uh, employers provide it and others don't, but, um. I know that behind the scenes that other things are being encouraged and I would just really hope that, um. keep those two on that behind the scenes list.
Yes, you're, you're correct. And that is something that we hear quite a bit from our existing companies is the need for you know, childcare, transportation, of course, is another issue as well. Some of the companies were kind of thinking outside the box and some were actually starting to think about doing their own onsite childcare. Might be opportunity there for companies to partner and have a co-op something along those lines.
And that is a real key one onsite, especially if they run twenty-four seven. Because then on breaks, parents are able to go across the, you know, hall or whatever to go and eat breakfast for their child or, you know, tuck them in when they go to go to sleep. So, yeah. I'm glad they're thinking that way.
And things like that really enhance the, the culture at a company and that is key to, you know, finding retaining employees today is having a really good work culture. So.
Thank you. One of your slides, you said that we, we now have the workforce, highest workforce since two thousand and nine in the county. And that kind of points to one of Judy's questions earlier, you know, with such a low unemployment rate, that it's good that we're being able to pull those people back into the, into the workforce because I know for these job announcements, you know, you hear people saying, well, where are they going to, where are we going to get the employees from? But it looks like we're being able to pull these folks back in and and grow our workforce here. So that's a really good sign for our county.
There is one more thing. So in watching the news, one of the issues that has come up in this whole area trying to find people to work is on the application for people coming out of prison box seven. Yes, I committed a felony. And because most, most larger businesses probably use a service that runs all the applications through a computer and kicks out everything that's in box seven. Have, has EDC talked about that at all? And because I know that we have employers in our county that do hire former felons.
Yeah, that hasn't been a focus, but you know, at the same time, everyone's trying to figure out how to find the people they need to fill their roles and a lot of it is a corporate culture decision. And some, you know, years ago wouldn't touch it at all, but now more companies are open to it. We've had some success stories for years with ones. We had a company at one point tell us their entire, you know, welding department was made of former prisoners and honestly, they said they were some of their best employees because they knew there was the one shot they had and they showed up. So yeah, it's a lot of it's a mindset, but I think that you have to explore all avenues now when you're struggling to find people.
Yeah, because when people come out of prison, and I think the sheriff alluded to this earlier today, is if they don't have a new path and, you know, have the services around them, it's so easy to go back. Well, what else do they have? But to go back to their old life. And by getting rid of box seven, this one gentleman said, yes, I committed a felony. I stole some money and, but that should not prevent me from cleaning school buses after school.
I don't know about getting rid of the box because there are companies that by law have positions where there can't be felonies, but it is a culture thing. And so, you know, Jim and I have met with Run Cabarrus Community College and began conversations with them about training those who are currently incarcerated. You know, we've, we've got the North Carolina Manufacturers Institute, which is a good platform, certainly for something like this. But another part of the Manufacturers Institute is their ability to pull together companies who are interested in the graduates of the institute. And so the strength of this would be creating manufacturing institute style training that is short training. They get national certificates and then we have a network of companies that are actually willing to, to go in and hire. So that, that is, those conversations are already underway. So that's, that's a good thing. What else I have in my mind? You know, the, the good thing about, Mike, you talked about question folks have about where are these jobs going to come from with, with demand comes with, with small, well, supply and demand is what I'm talking about, trying to get to. It's driving up wages and that's, that's a good thing. If you're a consumer, if you're a company, it's making it harder and harder, certainly. You know, to, to attract and compete, especially small business that frankly, has a hard time providing healthcare. But, but that, that's who we're not seeing. We're, we're not seeing the, the we're seeing big companies coming here and so it's providing a tremendous opportunity. And we talked about this now for years is we got some folks working two and three jobs. They're part-time jobs and they're part-time jobs because of some of the requirements put on smaller companies by the federal government. And so we, we could have predicted this, just like we could predict the sun's going to come up. Is companies say then, well, I'll just give you so many hours. I don't have to, I don't have to comply with mandated this or that. And so the, the, the result was a little predict, well, pretty predictable. What, what this, this new surge of economic growth for Rowan County is doing is it's taking people out of three minimum wage jobs where they're gone from home a lot. And it's, and they're gone from the county. By the way, over forty percent of folks that live in Rowan County work outside of Rowan County. So we're hoping this will, and why do they do that? Some of them are nuclear physicists and they've got to go somewhere else for work, right? Because we don't have a submarine lab here in, in Rowan County or we don't have this or that. But a lot of them were going somewhere else because of higher wages or just available jobs. And so we're hoping that a, a large percentage of those folks will be able to come home as, as it were. When you look at the statistics that Scott gave us, the average wage now, these new jobs so far, and I would say not much has hit us yet, except for Chewy and a few other companies that we're, we're grateful for being here. The surge has not hit. And when the surge hits, we'll see wages that are much higher than what we're currently seeing. If you want folks, you're going to have to provide these benefits. You're going to have to provide higher wages. You're going to have to provide health insurance and vacation and retirement. They may find that the market is going to require that they solve the issue of transportation and childcare, which we couldn't mandate on them. But I, I was surprised a few months ago when I was researching the definition of poverty in Rowan and North Carolina. You know, it's like I had, had the numbers at my office. I forgot to bring them, but it's like thirteen thousand some dollars, thirteen, between thirteen and fourteen thousand dollars for a single person. And then you get up to eighteen to nineteen thousand for two people. And certainly I don't know how you could live on that. But at eighteen thirty-one an hour, a quick work on my phone, that's thirty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars. If your husband and wife, that's seventy-six thousand, two hundred dollars. You're welcome to the middle class.
Yeah.
If it's twenty dollars an hour, which we're seeing all over the place, that's forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars an hour, a, a, a year or eighty-three thousand, two hundred dollars for husband and wife. Twenty-two dollars an hour is fifteen, forty-five, forty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty. And folks that bought my house that moved here from Wilmington, the sun went and got a job. I won't say where. I got, got a job, a high school diploma, twenty-seven dollars an hour to start, plus, plus production bonus. That's fifty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars a year. So when we look at this slide, increasing prosperity, prosperity isn't all about money. It's, but it has something to do with being able to eat and recreate and provide for your kids and clothes and shoes and opportunity and reducing poverty certainly is around that. So I, I know that even scripture says the, the poor will be with us always. And, and, and what that means is there's exceptions. There's folks who can't work. There's for, I guess, lots of reasons, right? But if, if we've been talking about opportunity, opportunity is here. And with husband and wife working, they could be making over a hundred thousand dollars a year soon here in Rowan County. And so then the onus really goes on, then the individual, we go back to the individual to say, what are we? What are you doing? What can we do to help prepare you? You could basically go to school for free at Rowan Cabarrus for the, for the past couple of years. You don't have to have a four-year degree. But you also need to pay attention to what is happening. I, I have something here on my phone. Saw a guy speaking and saying it. We are entering this AI time now is artificial intelligence, which is going to deplay displace a lot of people. So if you're in high school, if you're a senior and junior in high school and you don't want to listen to the old man or even this old, old man here, any of us, you'd better start thinking about your future and how future technology can replace you in a heartbeat. There are some, we've got whole segments of our society been left behind because of technology and outsourcing to other countries who are now lost. If you talk to Run Cabarrus Community College, boys are falling behind in enrollment. And that is a whole social challenge that we're trying to figure out. We may have three point four percent unemployment, but everybody knows that's not true. Across the country, we have a seven to eight million working age men between the age of twenty-five and forty-five that are sitting at home on TikTok and watching porn forty hours a week. Those are the facts. So how, how do we recoup these, all of us, folks in our community, boys, girls, men and women, and bring them along when opportunity is here? How do we help lead them to water and show them how to drink, right? And, and so you guys are doing your job. Rowan Cabarrus, man, they're doing their job. We're having conversations with Catawba and Livingstone. I don't think I'm telling anything out of school, but you had a company looking at Rowan County that had a ton of engineering jobs. Well, guess what? We don't have engineering school in Rowan County. So how do we attract those type of jobs here? Well, that answer will have to come from Livingstone and Catawba and maybe rethinking or adding to their, their thinking about those things that they are providing their kids in the way of training that is AI proof, that is technology proof. Certainly, I mean, next five to 10 years, we're talking about self-driving cars. So this education collaborative is one of the most important things I think that we've done with Jim and I sitting with we're the only two non PhD folks in the whole room and our, our goal is to irritate the fire out of the educators. And we're good at it. We, we wear it and, and we love them and I think they tolerate us, but it is to try to irritate them to, with folks in the private sector, really pushing them in these areas of this relevant. The, the word is, the, the important word is relevant education, relevant to today and tomorrow, and not just the way we've been thinking for the last fifty years.
Yeah, and we really appreciate the investment in education technology. Because really, that, that is something that, that companies look at. I mean, we, we had a company visit a few weeks ago. Part of their visit was to tour the advanced technology center at R C, RCC has at the research campus and they were very impressed with it. And it shows you the counties and the, and the areas commitment to technology and that, that sort of stuff does resonate with people looking for those skills.
In that technology center that you checked, that you visited has robots in it. And they have people servicing them, people programming them, all types of things going on.
There was one running around in the lobby when we first came in and I think that was a, you know, nice first impression for the company. But yeah, I mean, it, it's obvious that we need these highly skilled folks to, to stay in the game and we, we can bring in a different level of jobs if that is the case. We need something for everybody, obviously, but the stuff that's going to bump up the wages where we want them to be, it's going to probably be technology driven. And, you know, I think we talked about poverty rate and things like that. The, the opportunity and inclusivity analysis had, had said that wages were starting to trend and the poverty level was starting to trend back in the right direction, even, you know, before COVID, of course. Different ballgame now, but I know it said in twenty twenty, twenty-ten, our poverty rate was around twenty-one percent, a lot higher than pretty much everyone around, but it's fallen every year since. And I think in twenty nineteen, it was around fourteen percent, which is pretty much identical at the time, at least to the state average. So, and also to the household income, median household income had reached like fifty-two thousand at that point. And that was still less than most of the counties at the time in North Carolina, but the pace of the gains was higher than the other counties. So we were making the big leaps forward that.
Okay, so those numbers are for our county specifically.
The, well, the, the fourteen percent, yes, that's right. That's correct.
Thanks.
In comparison to the average, but again, that was twenty nineteen, that was before COVID, but even then we were starting to trend, I think, in the right direction.
Well, tell Rod we missed him. Wish him our best. Number two guy did a good job.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We appreciate your support as always and hope to come back next year with some more good news.
Thank you for what you guys do and representing our community. Thank you, Scott.
Pleasure. Thank you.
Rod is the sales guy and Scott is the brains of the organization. We appreciate Scott very much.
All right, let's see if this works this time. Thank you, Scott. And commissioners, I think we're about ready to wrap up. I'm going to try and get you guys through a quick exercise to see where your priorities lie. So this is going to be a two-parter. The first thing I'm going to do is ask each of you to tell me two things that you think, that you thought before coming into this room today were really important priorities for the county. So two things really important that you thought of before you walked into this room. And whoever wants to start, you can feel free.
I call it the crisis center. It's crisis, mental health and substance use basically on demand. So people don't end up in our jails, which will help bring down the cost and also assist the hospitals. ED in not being overcrowded and having, having people have to sit there for days. And it literally happens because we don't have a facility where they can go other than jail.
And your second one? You can come with two if you want to. You don't have to.
Oh, well, I think childcare. We've got to get our little ones childcare and help for those who are trying to work a job. We've got all these jobs now and, but we've got to have support for for those who would like to go back to work, especially single parents. It's kind of like the three, I call it the three-legged stool. It's like childcare, transportation and healthcare. So, but yeah, childcare is a big one.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? You can have talked about it. You can have not talked about it. We talked about a lot though. So you've got things up here if you need something to, to spur your thoughts. But two things that you think are big priorities for the county.
Well, I think what we've talked about several things is that, you know, we're at this, at this point of growth in the county and so I think we do need to start. We have been and continue, you know, to, to plan for the future. So we don't have some of the issues that some of the other counties that was mentioned had when they had a explosion of growth.
So, you know, it's always the balance between, you know, making sure that um, we do what's right for all the citizens and make sure that um, you know, we look at things like, and I'm glad that, that we've talked about our um, agriculture here in the county and trying to match that up with the growth we're having. Making sure that, that I think we're in a good spot where we can probably be leaders um, and how to manage that, being that agriculture is so important to our county and we also have opportunity that uh, of the growth that's coming here. Uh, because where we're located along the interstate and a lot of the utilities and things that um, that we've talked about in the past. So I think uh, planning for the future is important and that goes to all the aspects of, you know, we've talked some about education. Uh, we've talked about emergency services, we talked about schools. And so I think really um, being able to do that. And then I think the other thing that um, is important for us to do that was mentioned earlier is, is making sure that we have the right workforce here uh, for the county, um, county employees. Because we're going to be in competition, you know, with the private sector as these wages go up and as, as things. So, you know, we've, we've started some training and every year we try to look at uh, salaries and what we can do and benefits and those sort of things. And um, you know, it's, it's our job as um, I guess the board of directors for the county is to make sure that um, that Aaron and, and we create the environment that people want to work in, that they feel valued and that um, you know, it's a place that uh, people want to, want to work because you can make more in um, in the private sector sometimes, but you know, you're fulfilling what you want in life. So I don't want us to be a hindrance um, because the environment we have. And I think we've done a good job um, trying to value our employees. And I think that's something we need to keep doing. So um, there's probably a lot of things we could put up there, but I'll pick those two.
Thank you. Commissioners, Ed's are green.
Um, I'll just say that um, I, I appreciated today Chip Main's uh, program to us, uh, talking about the um, tax uh, reevaluation that's come up, that's required by the state of North Carolina. And informing us on those um, those things of, we have inflation uh, that has caused a lot of increase with that. We have growth in the county that has caused a lot of uh, of that. So um, I, I thought that was very informative and that the folks in the county always have a tough time uh, accepting increases in, in the reassessment, but it, it's something that has to be done. But I thought Chip did a good job and brought us great figures on that. Um, also uh, uh, I enjoyed the uh, the budget review that um, that was done. Um, folks never understand, um, what was it that Aaron told us today that, that we have uh, eighty-nine million dollars or eighty-six million dollars in the rainy day fund? I can't remember what it is. It, it, it goes to show how stable the county is and how, how well the, in my opinion, how well the management uh, has done and the decisions that's been made um, show a stable county.
Awesome. Thank you. Commissioner Reds?
So um, I think that just an overall uh, topic I would say is the issue of education. You know, we, we could fill every exit along eighty-five with distribution centers. Uh, but is, is that what we want? If we don't want that, then we've got to provide a workforce that demands a different um, le- level of uh, opportunity. So from K all the way up to sixteen, we've uh, we've got to, we've got to do better in K twelve. And um, none of us here know how to fix that or we would run for school board. Jim's the closest one. Well, no. Um, Mike was on school board. Jim's got a son that's on school board. But I don't know how to, I don't know how to fix uh, the school issue. Uh, so when I talk about education, it's facilities and it's uh, it's programming. We have, we have got to make decisions on Knox. Um, we initially talked about Knox, then we talked about a K eight and then COVID hit and now uh, uh, K eight is upwards of ninety million plus. Um, we've, we've got a, a budget of fifty-five million, so we're going to have to figure out um, what, what happens there. There's an opportunity again, I think in the state for something, I think, is it a great grant? Is that what they call it? Forty million dollars available there. We have put our lobbyists and our legislators um, in the arena for that to, to really push this year. Um, I think that's the only opportunity, uh, maybe the last opportunity we have um, to, to talk about a K eight. Other, otherwise um, we'll, we'll have to fall back to talking about um, certainly replacing Knox. And then we've got southeast or southern conversation. So there's facilities that are an issue. There's the future of facilities for education are, are an issue. There's bringing up the quality of K twelve. Uh, certainly a shining stars Rowan Cabarrus Community College. They do everything we ask them to do and more. They are rock stars. And then we've got two good colleges here in Livingstone and Catawba that are at the table every two weeks for two hours with Jim and I. Uh, having those conversations about how they contribute and they don't have to be at the table. They don't get any public funding from us. So we appreciate that. So education, I think is number one on my list. Um, and then uh, I would, I would probably put crime as number two. We've got a new sheriff. We've got new um, judges. We've got uh, new clerk of court. We've got new, new, new. Uh, last year we got together with all of them and began to talk about issues of gangs and, and crime and stuff. And so that's ha- happening again this year. But that, that's a quality of life. I mean, if you can't feel safe, um, even if, if you're not one that's contributing to that, then that really hurts our quality of life. And we want to be a community that is known as a, a safe community. So those would be my two.
Awesome. Thank you. A lot of really good things. The next thing I'm going to ask is that you tell me just one thing that you heard someone else say today that you're excited to look into. So you're not committing to it. You don't know that it's going to be your favorite, but you heard something that piqued your interest and you want to learn a little bit more.
I want to go to the past. Because in, I remember when we were first, well, even before we were elected, our chairman, Greg Edwards, who's got this wonderful vision for Rowan, said, we can either plan for ourselves what we want to look like, or Charlotte will do it for us. And uh, that has truly come to pass. And um, even though that's not my thing, but I, I, I'm just thrilled that so many of the um, I think all around things this county needs, especially focused towards people have really surfaced today. And um, I just want to thank my colleagues for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Something that piqued your interest today?
Well, I'll take that big softball that's just been lobbed our way. Uh, EDC is independent from Rowan County. They're not employees. But they do such a good job for us every year, year in and year out. Now we, you know, eight years ago, um, Scott was about the only one that was there at that point in time. But uh, we're just such a fortunate community to see um, what they have done over the last eight years, because that's what I've been here. And have helped to improve the lives of many citizens, those that are willing to get out and work. Uh, there are jobs available for almost anybody that's willing to work and uh, if you're not willing to work, I, I don't have a lot of sympathy for you in improving your life. But any man who has a wife and children and uh, wants a better paying job, it's happened over the last eight years because of, because of the EDC and other things that have changed in Rowan County.
Thank you.
Well, I mentioned the uh, and we didn't really talk much about it, but the um, driving school, uh, I think that's, I think that's a very um, piqued my interest a lot. I mean, that's a very important um, thing we need for our economy, uh, drivers. And um, I think we've seen some of the issues with supply chains and things over the last couple of years. Having that, I think it opened some opportunities for some regional training sites and things that, that maybe we can get some help with statewide, because I think there's some um, some opportunities that we might could roll in with that. So um, I'm excited to hear more about that and uh, see, see how that works out in the future. You know, I agree. Um, you don't know, but the community knows that Jim and I are insurance guys and I had a young man in the um, at my desk a couple of weeks ago, sitting across from me and I'm just taking a payment for his insurance, but I always ask, you know, what's your story? What are you doing? What do you do for work? And he said he uh, worked at, um, he was a supervisor at Food Lion. I said, oh, wow. He said, well, that's what I did do. I'm, I'm not doing that anymore. Not, I was gearing up to hear a, a bad story. And he said he left. And he's uh, taking truck driver training. And I said, you left them or did you get, he said, no, I left. He says, um, I see a, a big future in that. And um, so I said, so are you going here in Rowan County? He said, yeah. And uh, so sitting right across from me is kind of the fruit of some of the stuff we've been doing because it is a, a tremendous opportunity for folks. And uh, he wants to own his own truck or trucks. And these guys and gals are making, you know, seventy, eighty, ninety, a hundred thousand dollars a year. And uh, and he knew it. And I'm looking at him and, you know, you, you look at folks and you wonder how together is this guy? And when he left, I'm just thinking, man, there you go again. You know, you didn't, I didn't expect to hear this from this young guy, but he's got it figured out. And uh, I picked up the phone and called Carol Spalding, Dr. Spalding at Rowan Cabarrus and told her, I said, man, I'm just so encouraged because um, you know, folks get it. So I'm, I'm with Mike. I, I think we have a huge opportunity. I'd, I don't know what the cost of all that. I do know we're borrowing trucks from another county. I was sitting in traffic and saw that it's, it's some other school, truck driving school, some county, I don't know what the county is, truck driving school. And I thought, man, that ticks me off. They're driving by our, driving up and down our streets with another county's college on there because we're borrowing trucks. And I'd like to figure out how at minimum, we could uh, have our own trailers.
Get a magnet to stick over that.
Name, yeah, our own name on there. So um, well, that, that could be. Um, but so I was just echoing what he said, but um, I agree with Judy and Mike, you know, we're, we're focused, uh, we're focused a lot now on people, I think. Uh, we've been focused on economic development. I've said this before, there's an old saying in sales, nothing happens till something sold. And so until someone has a job and can buy stuff and provide for their family, everything else is kind of noise. And so we, we've got that. And as, as we're talking about what do we do? You know, I'm, I'm not going to be here much longer. Uh, as a commissioner, what do we do over the next four years? Um, four years is not much time in a legislative situation. And so we really don't have to worry about the economic development side of things now because these guys are rolling. And uh, the, the question is now, how do we transfer that into these issues of uh, declining poverty and providing opportunity? And um, when Mike talks about EMS stations and these things, building out our infrastructure, which we've not done in the past. And so uh, doing all these things, buil- building, building uh, building out our public safety infrastructure is something that um, because of Mike's conversation has uh, piqued my interest.
Can I add something to that story that I don't tell often enough? Right? I can't remember. Shortly after we came on the board, we built the Rockwell EMS station. And you know, I'm thinking, well, this is, this is a good thing, but uh, you know, is this the best way for our dollars to be spent and we need this and that? And I had a lady come up to me and she said, uh, Mr. Green, I just want you to know that, that uh, y'all built that new EMS station. And they responded to my son's house. Uh, was one of the first calls that they made. And he had had a heart attack. And he would not have survived if somebody had had to come from Salisbury or some other station. And she said, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate uh, what the county did by building that. And that has stuck with me for eight years now, or seven, whatever it was. And uh, just thinking that a lot of things we don't talk about enough are the positive things that go on in the county. And we may get called up on uh, somebody that had wrote an editorial to the paper on Sunday that we can read and we, you know, don't like, but uh, there are some things that we have done that are pretty important.
Thank you. Well, I think it's been a great and productive day. I know you guys have a meeting at three, so I think that is the end of my portion. I appreciate your time, attention and patience going through all this. And it was a pleasure being here with you all.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.